We'll gavel the Select Board meeting to order. And we will start by telling everybody that this meeting is being recorded. And on Zoom and on Sterling Lancaster Community Television. And with a roll call, Jason. Alex.
Here.
Steve here. Okay, now, the next, first item is the approval of the minutes. I say it and then you guys do something. So this works.
I'm just getting together, I'm trying to get online, so.
Would the clerk like to make a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Of the meeting.
Up meeting September 5th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 300. Off to a fantastic start. All right. We are going to take things out of order since the next thing up for bid is is a joint meeting at 7:00 and it's 6:04. So we are going to jump a little out of order. And if it is okay with folks, we are going to go to public comment. I'm just sort of looking at what we can try to accomplish between now and 7:00. If we're very good, we can accomplish almost all of it. We'll go to public comment and then we're going to town administrator report. And then we'll see how much time we have left. Okay, public comment, and as always, we recognize people in the room first. And then people online, if you wish to be heard, please put your digital hand up. As always, if you would like to be heard for public comment, we we allow public comment, we ask you, we require you to be respectful of each other, of the town, of town employees, and that you use the three minutes you're given to express your opinion on the matter and not to attack anybody. If you do, we'll use the judgment of the chair to end your portion of public comment. So with that, I recognize Rob Zidek.
Thank you, Rob Zidek, 103 Cleaver Road, speaking as a private citizen of Lancaster, Massachusetts. I appreciate this opportunity to address the Select Board and the public. I've heard a tentative special town meeting date being discussed at the last two Select Board meetings. Twice again, as a response from the Select Board Chair to a member of the Planning Board during last Monday's meeting. Curious about the comments alluding to a legal latest date. I looked up the petition to get the applicable state law. It is Chapter 39, Section 10. Pertinent requirement is near the bottom of the first paragraph. When the calling of a special town meeting is in response to a citizen's petition, this law clearly reads that, quote, "Such meeting to be held not later than 45 days after the receipt of such request." Close quote. Getting further clarification from our citizens guide to town meetings on page four, we read, quote, "The special town meeting must be held no later than 45 days after the Board of Selectmen received the request," close quote. As indicated in approved Lancaster Select Board minutes, our board received this petition on November 21st, 2022. With a little math, we can deduce that the legal last day to hold the petition special town meeting is Thursday, January 5th, 2023. Please let me repeat that. The special town meeting requested by the petitioners and received by the Select Board must be held no later than January 5th, 2023, 17 days from right now. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and I will address the timing of the special town meeting and shed some light on Mr. Zidek's comments later in today's meeting. All right. Mr. Meribito. State your name and address and take it away.
Roy Meribito, 944 George Hill Road. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Of course.
At the November 14th, 2022 special town meeting, Lancaster hosted over 800 residents in very cramped conditions for over five hours. Residents were unable to socially distance and very few residents were masked. Needless to say, this environment represented a very dangerous potential for transmission of the COVID-19 variants, the influenza viruses, and the respiratory syncytial virus. Since this special town meeting COVID-19 statistics have been rising steadily, the December 15th, 2022 Massachusetts DPH COVID-19 dashboard shows 8,391 new confirmed cases over the past seven days and 1,466 new probable cases. Please keep in mind, these statistics do not reflect the majority of cases where at-home testing was performed to make the diagnosis and not reported to the state. A realistic positivity rate could be two to three times that reported by the state PCR testing. Further statistics by the state quoted a percent positivity seven-day average of 8.68%. Hospitalizations were 256, where patients primarily hospitalized with COVID-19. And 856 total patients hope hospitalized with COVID-19. There were 91 patients in intensive care and 30 patients were intubated. To put these numbers into context of where we are headed with COVID-19, the New York Times reported 1,406 cases per day last week in Massachusetts, an increase of 93% from the average two weeks ago. Test positivity has increased by 21%. Hospitalizations have increased by 30%. Patients requiring ICU care have increased by 26%.
One minute, one minute.
Increased by 37%. I shuttered to extrapolate the rise in infections to later in the month of January 2023. The Mass Department of Public Health weekly influenza update shows a very high severity of influenza for the week ending December 10. During this week, 7.09% of site visits were related to influenza-like illnesses, which is five rated than the regional baseline of 2.05%. Clearly, influenza season is well underway. Physicians across Massachusetts are seeing a spike in cases of respiratory syncytial virus. RSV is the most common cause of bronchitis and pneumonia in children younger than age one in the United States, according to CDC. In Massachusetts, the five-week average of RSV cases detected by PCR test has jumped from 63.4.
Right, your time's up. I'll give you another 20 seconds if you want to wrap up, but your time is up.
We remain in a time when vaccination, social distancing, the wearing of masks and proper hygiene, such as frequent hand washing, are tools to combat the spread of these viruses. Now is the time to utilize these tools to mitigate the spread. I truly hope the Select Board will understand this trend and its likely impact on residents of all ages when they are placed in a situation such as the indoor special town meeting with 800-plus residents. This scenario, although unforeseen at the November 14th special town meeting, is currently known.
Right.
I would hope that our Select Board decides.
Unmute him, sorry. Oh, sorry, Roy? All right, I apologize, you went over. If you have more comments, you can certainly get back in line. Sheila and David Mallett. I'm assuming it's one of you. Or both.
Hi, this is David Mallett. I am 2748 North Main Street in Lancaster. Just rising to support the petition and the 300 petitioners. I was one of the people that collected signatures and it took us 72 hours to get 300 signatures. I think if we had had even another week, we would have gotten another 300 to 600 easily. There's a big need in the town to revisit the town meeting of November 14th. As Roy mentioned, it was a five-and-a-half-hour meeting. Everybody is clear that it wasn't run to the most efficient manner that it could have been. And for that reason, so many people left, there was a huge disenfranchisement of voters. And based on the votes that were taken that night, it's looking very clearly that the people that left were positive voters, were most likely to be positive voters. I think that it's, I'm very happy that the Select Board is going to check and possibly give us an opportunity to have a new town meeting and that the Planning Board has looked into that and given a positive review of it. And I really appreciate that because, you know, it's difficult to get people to come to town meeting. It's difficult to run a town meeting of that size. It's exponentially larger than any town meeting I've been to for Lancaster. I would say at least three times larger than the normal town meeting. And that's because this question is so important to the entire town. So I appreciate that it's, you know, on the verge of at least being looked at again and having a new town meeting so that it could be. All right, I'm just going to wrap up and say thank you to the Select Board and to the Planning Board.
Thank you. Roy, did you put your hand back up or you're taking, because you're going to have to wait if you put your hand back up. And I'm going to ask your patience a second and just ask Roy, because we had a technical thing here. Roy, did you want to finish what you were saying?
Well, I kind of jumped around, but it's going to be kind of hard to, would you, do I have more time, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you another two minutes to it.
I think so, yeah.
All right.
Let me see where I left off. I'd appreciate that, Steve, thank you.
No, of course.
Let me see.
How about this, I'm going to pause, you find a spot. Do you want to find a spot and I can go to Ann Ogilvy while you're getting everything situated?
I'm okay, I'm good, Steve.
All right.
In Massachusetts, the five-week average of RSV cases detected by PCR has jumped from 68, 63.4 on November 13th of last year to more than 296.3 on November 12th this year. Let me see. Massachusetts Medical Society President Dr. Ted Calianos, Massachusetts Medical Society President Dr. Emily Chin, and Massachusetts Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics President Dr. Mary Beth Miato issued a joint statement citing, "Our level of concern has been elevated to the point at which we are compelled to share and recommend mitigation measures that can help to prevent illness. We remain in a time when vaccination, social distancing, the wearing of masks and proper hygiene, such as frequent hand washing, are tools to combat the spread of these diseases. Now is the time to utilize these tools to mitigate the spread of these viruses."
One minute.
"I truly hope the Select Board will understand the trend and its likely impact on residents of all ages when they're placed in a situation such as an indoor special meeting with 800-plus residents." This scenario, although unforeseen at the November 14th special town meeting, is currently known that it will be repeated at our proposed January 2023 special town meeting. I would hope that our Select Board would decide the future venue of this proposed meeting based on the above information in their discussion of this subject. The Mary Rollinson School Auditorium, Gymnasium, and Lunchroom are not viable options as this venue compromises the well-being of our most important and valued treasure. Our friends and neighbors respectfully submitted Roy Meribito. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thanks, Roy, appreciate your time. So Dave and Sheila, I think you either have your hand back up or you never took it down. Okay, there we go, Ann Ogilvy, three minutes.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate it. Thanks, Roy, for your thoughtful comments. I do know people who have gotten sick since the town meeting and believe that they got sick from the town meeting. And it sure would be a shame to hold another super-spreader event.
Well, let's speak very, Ann.
I appreciate.
Ann, hold on a second. From a public health perspective, that has a real, I just want to make clear that the public understands that was not labeled a super-spreader event, so that's, I just want to be very clear.
Well, we haven't collected the data, honestly, but I think you got my point.
But it's a very dangerous statement to just throw out there, but keep going.
Yeah, my point, well, that, the subject of my public comment tonight is actually dangerous statement, so it's a good segue. I want to read out loud to you the dictionary definition of disenfranchisement, because this keeps getting thrown around, heard you Chairman Kerrigan use this, I've heard other people, Mr. Mallett used it this evening. The state of being deprived of a right or privilege, especially the right to vote. And I know that this is a term that, you know, we're seeing used across the country to challenge elections that were legal. We're seeing it in our own town to challenge a vote that was legal. I respect the right of the petitioners to do what they did and to collect their 300 signatures. But I have to really caution all of you and all of our fellow townspeople about using this term disenfranchisement. I too sat in the auditorium for five hours. I watched people that I know that had a hard time getting there, people that put themselves at risk getting there because they were concerned about the spread of disease at the meeting, people who have mobility issues that stayed there for five hours. And if we're going to talk about disenfranchisement, I want to make sure that we talk about the people who are closest to this proposed multi-mega warehouse development that had the favor of multiple boards in town, of two-thirds of the Select Board, even of the town administration, and lots of help from the town administration. I think it's very hard to look at what happened on November 14th and think about the vote that was taken and call that vote disenfranchisement. We can call that meeting very disorganized, terribly run, a hard meeting for every single person who was there that night. But I think disenfranchisement is kind of a, it's a buzzword, it's a dangerous buzzword. And I don't think it's respectful at all of the people who live in the White Pond neighborhood who are most closely impacted by the, I'm almost done, I understand.
Your time's up.
By a proposed zoning change. So thank you very much, be careful with our language.
Well, I would, I would offer the same comment to you in return. All right, George Franz. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
It is, I've heard many times a suggestion that we should change the venue for the meeting. And while it's understandable, because Mary Rollinson is simply not large enough for that large of an event, I just beg somebody to suggest an alternate venue. I don't think there's any place in town, even the Macklin Auditorium at AUC that was used for town meeting for many, many years. I'm not sure of the capacity, but I'm thinking it's 400 to 500, something like that. And I'm not sure that, you know, that that would accommodate. So that's, that's one thing. A suggestion of a viable venue would be a great idea. Let me move on. I have been thinking a lot about the proposed development. And bearing in mind that I am an environmentalist, I worked for the State Environmental Department and then the federal EPA for 20 years and was an environmentalist long before that. So how do I come down on this thing? And I finally figured a way that might make sense to a lot of people, I hope. What I decided is that I think the town will be better able to manage the impacts from the proposed development than it will be able to manage a crisis in funding that drives us to a Prop 2.5 that nobody wants to pass anyway. So that's, that's my strong feeling and I hope others will echo that.
Well, thank you, George. Did it in under two minutes, thank you. All right. Kendra Dickinson, three minutes.
I'll do it in less than that, thank you, Steve. Kendra Dickinson, 402 Omen Way, speaking as a private citizen. I also just wanted to thank the Select Board for recognizing the citizen's petition. In my short seven years here in Lancaster, I hadn't heard of anything like that happening. So I think it truly speaks to the motivation of some residents who maybe couldn't stay, couldn't attend, for whatever reason, et cetera. I'm not going into the weeds on that. Going to the town's financials, you know, there's a lot of different purviews on this and a lot of different opinions and everybody's opinion matters. However, I'm not seeing any other suggestions besides, you know, how to raise money in this town that are more immediately fireable. I spent multiple hours this weekend sitting with a very treasured town resident who is a senior and valued his opinion on the fact that 18% of our population are seniors. And it would be a shame that even if half of those seniors couldn't afford to live here, they had to leave. And another reminder to the public that this particular warrant item didn't pass by 13 votes. It wasn't a landslide, 13 votes. 1-3, I know it's a really unlucky number, but I think it makes a statement as to how people really felt and for whatever reason couldn't stay and vote. And I think that it's important that, you know, residents know that it wasn't a landslide, it was 13 votes. Thank you.
Thank you. You beat George by 13 seconds, speaking of 13. Okay, seeing no more hands, public comment is now closed. All right, thank you everyone for participating. And again, as I said earlier, some of the comments around the special town meeting scheduling will be addressed later in the meeting. All right, town administrator report, we ready?
Yes, sir, I just want to introduce.
Hey, Roy, Roy, you're unmuted. But we're glad you're staying on.
Amanda Cannon, who is our new town clerk effective January 1st of this year.
Huzzah.
Congratulations, Amanda.
Well, I want to thank you for taking the mantle of this responsibility and thank you for all of the many, many years that you've worked and volunteered in town to support our town clerk's office on elections. Anything you'd like to say? Well, you're not suited to the job.
Well, she has been holding down the fort on a temporary basis. We are just so excited to have her, she's got so many great ideas. She's really great with technology and just an all-around wonderful person, so we're really happy.
Thank you.
Well, terrific. Any comments, thoughts, questions?
Yes, can I get your emails?
Oh, no. Excuse you, from the board, sorry.
But we can talk.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, committee, I did not realize you were coming over until I had to tease in our agenda. But yes, but thank you very much. I know that you've done a fabulous job with elections. I don't miss an election, you're all.
Neither do you, you're always there.
And I think of, I think of your grandmother, how happy.
Thank you so much.
She would be if you, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, let's carry her out of here on our shoulders, which we'd like to. I think we can move on, Mandy.
Well, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Welcome, thank you very, very much. And we wish you and your family a happy holidays. This is, this is, as Alex referred to, generational in your family to support elections and enfranchising our voters, and so we appreciate you stepping up.
Happy to be here.
And she is working sporadically and through the holidays, but will begin in earnest on a more regular schedule, 1-3.
She had you starting.
Just January.
She had you starting on 1-1, which is hypocritical. We're not having you start on the Saturday.
If I was allowed to do it, I would.
All right, Mandy, thank you so much, lovely to see you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
That is it, okay, fantastic.
Yes.
Yeah, it is for.
Because the other departmental updates are budget-related.
Yeah, they're budget-related, so administrative budget policy. We're going to get to that, yeah, that's further out, yeah, yeah. I'm going to go to. Do we have time? Well, let's, actually, let's do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have an old agenda.
Oh, all right.
Decam was on there.
Ah, yes.
I do apologize, I have hiring updates in other departments. So I was able to meet with several folks from Mass Housing, the Executive Office of Development, the Business Office, and one of the offices that deals with green energy. And so a couple of different options that we're considering is going for some grant monies for basically cleaning up the property. It isn't a known brownstone by any means, or brownfield, but.
It's not a brownstone.
But it would be great, yeah, no, it's not a brownfield. But there are some things that were brought up when they were demolishing the power plant that was there, so that's something to look into and there's some funding availability for that. A couple of the things that we went through is just what would happen when and if we get to this time next year and we aren't in a position that we necessarily have a design in hand or we have a developer that we wish to work with. And I think that, you know, we sort of have that well in hand that we'll be working. Mass Development will be helping us, you know, touch base with Decam. And so we're looking to do some environmental analysis, but like I said, I'm hopeful that the Commonwealth will be able to help us financially with that. I don't think we're in a position right now to be able to bid out any type of project without having done the heavy lifting for the town's end.
Makes sense. Mr. Allison, I'm trying to fix my chocolate bar.
Thank you, Kate, it's really exciting to see all the progress that's been made lately. I feel like this is something that we need to kind of focus on, especially from the board. So from that perspective, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Steve Kerrigan, the liaison from the board for Decam, such that all correspondence and scheduling flow through him.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that from the board we're coordinated. I feel that this is coming faster, stronger, not to quote anybody, but we need to make sure that we have attention to detail and we coordinate it through all of our efforts, so that is the intent of the motion.
Further discussion?
Well, as you know, I had been doing this and I appreciate Kate's work and support on that. I would think that I would be more appropriate for that since I have that background and do it. But, and I actually asked about that last, that last meeting. But I understand if there's a different will.
That's why we're having a discussion.
Yep. There you go.
I just want whatever easiest to streamline the process for the town. So whatever we feel is easiest. Fantastic, good conversation.
Well, I mean.
Really feel like we're digging into it.
Jason made his motion.
He did. Okay. Any, look, I'm not looking for additional things to do. As you know, this is one of the things I ran on is making sure that we provide the town with many more opportunities for revenue diversity, particularly related to Decam and AUC. That both properties are very close to all of us and wanting to make sure that that property in particular gets done right. So if it's the will of the board, I'll take on the responsibility to work with Kate on it. I do think, by the way, Kate is doing a great job. And I don't know that it requires a ton of work on my part, but, or on the board representative's part, what?
I hope not, not on anyone's.
But if it's the will of the board, I will, I will be glad to accede to it and to it.
Well, and I don't expect to persuade you otherwise, but obviously I have a strong knowledge base and I think we all ran on the same platform. So please don't take it personally, I'm sure you're quite capable.
I'm not going to take it personally, I'm not, I don't, it takes a lot for me to take something personally. I will, and I will say for you not to take this personally, that I was concerned, as I expressed a few meetings ago, the slow pace at which we were moving forward.
Yeah, and I didn't have the opportunity to discuss that and why, but have done a lot of background work, but if you want, it sounds like, it sounds like you've had the discussion and you want to do it. So that's good.
I have not, I have not had the discussion other than sitting right here. This is, that motion, I literally even didn't see the item on the agenda. So this was not something that I was aware of until it was spoken.
I don't think it was on the agenda, but that's okay.
well it's
at least mine
it is it's it's right there it's really right there I meant I didn't see DCAM on the agenda
oh okay DCAM is yes
yeah all right any further discussion anyone opposed indicate by or anyone in favor indicate by saying aye aye anyone opposed
aye nay aye to the both
all right any other department updates Kate you had said no they're all on budget
are there any more on the agenda
not that I know it just says other department updates departmental updates
no not at this time because they are budget related
I will note the presence of two of our finance committee members but since we called the meeting for seven I don't want you I normally would recognize people who are here but since we called for seven we have to wait so my apologies okay good um okay next item up for bid let's go to appointments and resignations and licenses so I think we can get through those before seven and then we can jump to administration budget and policy if we have additional time before seven PM makes sense um appointments and resignations there there's the Affordable Housing Trust um my understanding so Kate you were appointed as an ex officio trustee to the Affordable Housing Trust my understanding is you've talked to Victoria and given Kelly Dolan's role wish you you as the town administrator would like her to take that slot so you're seeking us to just ratify the decision you've made to appoint Kelly Dolan to fill that slot yes
specifically Kelly was the vice president of community housing
at Worcester Housing Authority
at Worcester Housing Authority for many years so as far as her competency on this and many other things she's far better suited this is right up her alley and I also think you know she has a direct correlation between the work that she's doing here and affordable housing and so I have I still plan to go from time to time although sometimes we have the government study committee meeting at the same time but this will ensure that the town departments are represented as zealously and consistently as possible Kelly is on the call if you need to hear from her although I I know you've all met her in the middle of the
yes and we first met uh when at my health center which of course was born out of the Great Brook Valley Housing Complex when she worked across the street from us so although I didn't know she was applying for the job when we went so Kelly I don't know if you um I don't know that there's anything you need to say um I think this is a pro forma thing for us to ratify Kate's assignment of this responsibility to you but if you'd like to say something you are more than welcome you got a thumbs up that's a very wise person
a lady a few words
indeed just just word to the wise though that's the way you get appointed to a lot more things by not saying anything all right is there a motion to ratify that decision to have Kelly Dolan fill the ex officio trustee spot on the Affordable Housing Trust
so moved
second any discussion on the motion hearing none all those in favor
aye
aye
question are you still on the
I am
so you talked about government study committee at the same time
that's why sometimes I can't go to the Affordable Housing either
yeah
and look there may there may come a time yeah well it's lots of work being done um there may come a time where it may make sense for me to step down as the select board representative we can tackle that maybe in in twenty-three if either one of you wish to um look at the Affordable Housing Trust they do incredible work um all right licenses and permits review and take action on the following madam clerk
hold on we skipped around a little bit let me just get this um I will make a motion to approve a common victor's license for Sandy's Restaurant
second any discussion okay hearing none
discussion do we need to include a date on the motion at all or anything like that or is this just a
it's for the following twenty twenty-three
twenty twenty-three
it's to take action on the following twenty twenty-three I think I stopped speaking before I got to the twenty twenty-three renewal license applications
do we need to change the motion at all
um I don't sure
I make him I will amend the motion to say to approve the license for Sandy's Restaurant for twenty twenty-three
common victor
victor's license
I will second the amendment
any further further discussion hearing none
aye
aye
is that for the amendment
that's for the amendment
okay
uh and on the underlying motion
aye
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 okay
now
I will offer a motion to approve the application for cock route two Toyota for class one common victor license for twenty twenty-three
second any discussion for class one and common
sorry yes class one
okay
I see an extensive packet they're up to date which is great
great um any further discussion on the motion hearing none all those in favor
aye
aye
aye next
I'll offer a motion to approve the class one license for B and M Investments DBA Modena Motor Group for twenty twenty-three
she said class one that's the beginning
second
any discussion hearing none
aye
aye
aye well done okay we are crushing it let's just do communications real quick town offices will be closed sorry yes
did we want to do Joan Richards
we're going to get to that
oh I'm sorry about that
yep um we're doing communications uh town offices will be closed Monday December twenty-sixth which is the observed day of Christmas holiday and Monday January second twenty twenty-three which is observed for New Year's Day holiday our next select board hybrid meeting will be held on Tuesday January third because of the aforementioned holiday twenty twenty-three at six PM here or on Zoom or on SL TV uh earlier we made the appointment Kelly Dolan uh we do have and I'll yield to my colleague from Main Street on this uh Joan Richard stepped down recently and we accept that resignation with a heavy heart but we want to thank her for her service and I don't know if you want to offer any comments or thoughts
no the historic well yes I guess the historical society submitted to us in a lovely proclamation or ode I guess we bid farewell to Joan Richards and Joan has done a tremendous amount for the town in many different positions and offices always been a starward so she's we're I will make a I will amend the motion to say with deep regret or maybe
I didn't no one made a motion
okay um offer I would offer a motion to accept the resignation of Joan Richards with deep regret do we have an effective date
I believe it was immediately
second
any further discussion
nope
okay all those in favor
aye
aye
aye would you like to read the ode into the record
I will let you if you'd like to or I can
that's entirely up to you
um I'm sure the the historical society would appreciate excuse me commission would appreciate this reading it uh we build bid farewell to Joan Richards Joan Richards whose name in Lancaster is practically synonymous with the Lancaster Historical Commission LHC and the Lancaster Historical Society has often been the first smiling face seen and the first friendly voice heard by those who attend programs and events sponsored by the two groups her outgoing nature and gift of hospitality are always apparent if you've ever attended an LHC or LHS meeting you'll soon become aware of Joan's history excuse me knowledge of history in general and local history in particular as the secretary for both groups Joan is always careful to keep the meeting on track not only for Robert's Rules of Orders order but also according to the bylaws because she has a long memory of past happenings in town she is frequently called upon to inform current members as decisions are made moving into the future Joan has lived in Lancaster since nineteen seven seventy and ever since then she's been an active and involved member of the community in November nineteen ninety-two the Lancaster Select Board appointed Joan to the LHC as a full member she held that position for about a year and resigned shortly thereafter Joan was hired as the LHC Office Coordinator a position she held for many years the office was a busy place but Joan always took on the workload with positive energy and enthusiasm she did research wrote reports and grants handled correspondence and was a member of several committees all in the interest of preserving and promoting Lancaster history in October two thousand ten Lancaster Select Board appointed members Joan to the LHC as an associate member then in two thousand sixteen she became a full member as a secretary for LHC and the Executive Board of the LHC she has always kept up with the ongoing secretarial secretarial tasks that came her way we congratulate Joan on a job well done for the past thirty years and we wish her and her husband Jim every success as they begin a new lifetime chapter in a new location
well said and well read
thirty years that's amazing
thank you Joan for your immeasurable contributions to the community and we send with you our best wishes um okay uh now we have four items before I think four items left on the agenda before we hit the finance committee meeting at seven and we are gonna crush this we're gonna be so good and get all four done before seven o'clock okay all right item number one special time meeting finalize details and discuss or evaluate potential articles including sponsors and board positions so I just wanna um bring us back to some of the public comments that were made earlier and frame this a little for folks um so that everyone understands the circumstance that we're in uh there was a citizens petition as has been mentioned many many times uh when a citizen's petition is done um this board doesn't have many options once it is reviewed by um the signatures are approved the registrars meet um and the petition is validated um Rob is right mentioning that there's a forty-five day window there was a series of conversations with council town council to make sure that we are meeting the spirit of the law uh which is which says to move as quickly as we can to schedule a special time meeting for these petitioners um council believed um that scheduling it in January after the forty-five day deadline but in January would meet the spirit of the law and that is why we moved forward with trying to find an appropriate date um January seventh um and I'll go back to the location in a second it was determined actually I'll start with the location many people suggested many location options George Franz and his public comments discussed the Macklin Auditorium that building is not currently open for public use also the capacity is as George suggested not sufficient many suggested um just to put this to rest uh Nishova um we it would be like sending our Congress to Ottawa to do work we have to have our town meeting in the town of Lancaster uh and we are a lovely wonderful uh small town but we so are our spaces and so we are limited to where we can be the combination of rooms which we will reconfigure um in a way to be safe and capable of handling as many people as possible at the Mary Wilson School is the option that we have so um town staff which by the way I want to be very clear towns have worked very very hard they worked very very hard on the special time meeting on November fourteenth uh and they worked very hard to quickly uh review all those signatures they're working very hard to set this meeting up in a way that meets the needs of the community and meets our mandate under the law uh January seventh is something I haven't participated in since I was about twelve or thirteen but the Pinewood Derby um which takes up a lot of space at Mary Wilson School so that date is unavailable January fourteenth is the weekend of Martin Luther King Junior Weekend which did not seem like a good option for encouraging more people to show up to vote uh January twenty-first um as we kept clicking through the calendar um was a date that was unavailable for our interim town clerk coincidentally also was unavailable for our now current uh soon to be current town clerk uh and so we moved our thinking to January twenty-eighth both the buildings are available and just for the very clear record to anyone paying attention we cannot also have a town meeting without a town clerk at the time so January twenty-eighth is the date that I would suggest that the board approve today for a special time meeting no date is ideal no click no location is ideal um this date and this location gives us the time and flexibility to make it as ideal as possible we know there are limitations um last time relative to long lines uh we will work hard with our new town clerk she's already got ideas we've discussed this already um for how we can divide up entrances into the building so that we don't have backlogs we will go to find folks with mobility issues or seniors who wish not to stand in line and move them ahead of the line we'll have more volunteers supporting the work of registering people uh and we'll handle the balloting differently as well um but uh this is where we are and so although I appreciate the public comments around this this board has no option but to schedule this meeting and there is no place to schedule it other than the Mary Wilson Elementary School and the facilities there around um so I think let me just put my glasses on make sure I covered all the things I wanted to um oh and also I want to be very clear people keep thanking us for recognizing the citizens petition you know I mean that we have no option to recognize the citizens petition that is and I and I thank sis by the way I also want to thank citizens on on any side of any issue for being as engaged as they are because um it takes a lot of time and energy and resources and work and time away from family and fun to be as engaged as as citizens are uh but as one of the commentators said a lot of folks stepped up very very quickly and they made their voices heard and we are on this road whether folks want it to be or not um our next process after the votes were approved was to send the information actually once we got the petition in was to send it to the planning board for consideration days we all know had a meeting on the twelfth when we could go today at a hearing um to consider this article uh on the enterprise zone um redistricting and um have voted in favor of it and are working on a report currently and so with that we are moving forward um did I miss any aspect of this uh we do have to determine I would encourage my colleagues to support the date um my my recommendation would be to schedule it at something like ten in the morning to give people time if they show up early and get in I'll owe you to the to the um to the incoming town clerk um I would also say and and there'll be a time to approve an actual warrant but this is just the for guidance purposes that timing does give us as Kate pointed out earlier today to me it gives us two snow day options if it's snowing but it's going to be done and we can have the roads cleared to have the move the mean to one you can still do that or you can move it to another day if need be um so my recommendation would be let's is it the board's pleasure to discuss time and date first and then we can dig into some other aspects does that make sense whatever's best for you okay does that make sense
it's fine
so my proposal would be Saturday January twenty-eighth ten AM starts doors as early as the town clerk can get them open
so moved
okay great all right is there any discussion on the motion
sure lots of questions um I understand and I think it's a good idea to have town meetings if we can especially about important items that are important to many over eight hundred residents last time um on a weekend if we can because it frees up a lot of people however we do have people who've expressed concerns about having it on a Saturday um due to religious considerations um Sunday people also go to church um in the morning so I understand that um although there is less prohibition in Saturday afternoon Sunday afternoon excuse me so um while I have no personal concern I am concerned wanting to open it up and to as many people in the community and as you say not disenfranchise anybody or pardon me but or allow as many people to participate as possible so I would um think that we should consider would that be twenty ninth or something um the other thing is question so all my questions snow day um I don't how do you notice and how do you handle a snow day or something like that we could talk about that yeah
let me write let me write down our questions
well so snow day and you know um because usually there's lots of legal notices and protocols about where and how a meeting is called and the uh yes I know that we've talked about that was the blizzard of seventy-eight anniversary or something so who knows about
the chair with the planning board was kind enough to remind everyone that January twenty-eighth is the anniversary of the blizzard of seventy-eight which means no chance there's gonna be a big storm on that day
it's already done right um the other thing is when Mr. Franz was speaking and talking about location it's he's an active member of the first church and when they had our la uh very large town meeting about the incinerator that was held way way back before any of our time on the board incinerator, that was held way, way back, before any of our time on the board.
I don't think it has capacity for, I don't think it can fit eight hundred people.
It actually can.
But I don't know that you can fill their balcony, but.
Yeah, that's a different story.
That's a different story.
Anyway, but that is the large, it was held there because it was the largest capacity venue, and they packed it.
Yeah.
So, it's.
We do not have the same capacity as the number of rooms plus the shelter distancing halls that we plan to put together in both the middle school and.
Yeah, I mean, we could get it again.
Let's, all your questions at once, and then we'll go through them.
So that, well, those are the top three, so.
Do you have any, do you have a bottom three?
Probably, but let's go.
The, I hear you on Sunday versus Saturday. It's entirely your decision to vote for or against. I don't believe we, as elected officials, as harsh as it seems, should consider religious motives or religious attendance in the decisions we make, and to be quite honest, I think if we consider it for one denomination, we run afoul of the law and then being petitioned by many other denominations not to do things in and around their religious observance. So, that's my answer on twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, my take, again, the motion's on for the twenty-eighth. Snow day?
So, what would happen is that at least the chair of the board, but ideally all three board members, the moderator, the town clerk, and myself would come, we would open the meeting at nine a.m. or ten a.m., I'm sorry, ten a.m., sorry. Whenever it was supposed to be opened, whenever it's on the warrant, we would then make an announcement that we're continuing it either till later that afternoon at a so-declared time, or the following day at a so-declared time. Both of those instances will be on the warrant that's posted. When and if it is continued, that would be visible on the closed-capturing television. We would have the chief put something on the road sign that's there, we would put it out on social media, we would have, you know, lawn signs that are ready to go that we can stick in and around the grounds, so we would certainly publicize it there, and we would be very clear that that's the plan, so if the weather is inclement, either the night before or the morning of, people should be checking those mediums to make sure that they know when it is. And we have the reverse nine-one-one.
Yes.
Even better. That was Mike Hanson, Fire Chief.
Yeah, Fire Chief, running out of reverse nine-one, I was gonna, I was gonna make a note to ask that question, but I'm glad you just offered it up. Also, First Church has a capacity of four hundred and fifty people, according to someone who just texted me.
Okay.
What else you got?
That's it, so.
Do you have any, hold on a minute. Oh. Sorry. Jimmy, do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
'Tis the season. Just want to express my gratitude for all the hard work that you're putting into this, and you're doing a great job. I can't imagine, actually, I can imagine how much time and effort it's taking, and I'm just really grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Then what, the subtext of that is, he's really grateful it's me and not him, that's where the, but I appreciate that. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to schedule the special town meeting for Saturday, January twenty-eighth, ten a.m. at the Mary Rollinson Elementary School complex. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay, only because I like to respect the Seventh-day Adventist communities, so.
So, no.
No.
Okay, aye.
So, how did you vote, Steve?
I voted aye. So, two to one, two, one, zero. Okay, so that is that. Potential articles, including sponsors of the article, so there's an article that the petitioners would like us to consider at special time meeting. No petitioner was coming to the Planning Board last week, so I asked Kate in anticipation of that, just as she did when the board sponsored the same article at the November fourteenth meeting and the previous Planning Board meeting, I asked her to speak at the Planning Board on the twelfth. I think frankly, for ease and to be sure that the voters' wishes are met, I would encourage this board to officially sponsor the article and have Kate present.
So moved.
Okay.
And Kate present what?
And Kate present at the town meeting, as she did at the last time.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Did you ask any of the petitioners if they want to present?
I mean, there's four, there was plenty of outreach down to petitioners.
Three hundred, I know.
But council said it can either be the petitioner, the select board, the Planning Board, it just.
Okay.
Requires a sponsor and, okay?
Yep.
We're so close to getting it done before seven, too, and the bells are ringing. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. I will make one item quick, number four, administration budget and policy, discuss resident trespass complaints. I have a call into our Conservation Commission Chair to discuss this. I would ask the board's leniency to table this until I have a chance to have a conversation with him about it, just to chat. We've talked many, many times about many things, I'd just like the dispensation to be able to have another conversation with him before we discuss this in the meeting.
Do we need a motion for that?
It wouldn't be a motion to table, no.
I move to table, discuss resident trespass complaints for Conservation Commission Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, he's here, I think. Do you want to ask, because obviously it affects him, do you?
That's why I wanted to have a conversation with him.
Why, the audience didn't know if you wanted to ask him about it now, because he was here for, I'm assuming this.
I don't see him.
Oh, I thought he was.
So we have a motion on the floor?
Motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
Motion, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. So we're getting, it's seven o'clock, bear with me, three Finance Committee members, actually, we're never gonna be able to get through the next two, so I thought, high hopes, high hopes. All right, the two remaining items after our joint meeting with Finance Committee will be general budget update, which I think will be relatively general, and then our ABCC twenty-twenty-three seasonal population increase estimation form.
And are we doing the recycling center, too?
Yes.
Well, I was saying, under the budget.
That's under budget, okay.
Under the budget section and the ABCC. So those will be, for those of you paying attention at home, stick around, because after Finance Committee, we'll be digging into that. So, if the Finance Committee members either, it's best to be heard if you're in the first or second row by the owl, but it's entirely up to you. What would happen soon-ish is the chair of the Finance Committee would open the Finance Committee meeting, take a roll, and then we would begin the joint meeting.
Do any of you want to come up in the meantime?
And while that's happening, Kate will be putting some materials up on the screen. So. Wherever you'd like, but I'm just saying, the first two rows are the best to be heard.
Do you want to bring chairs up, or do you want to sit up here?
Just a reminder to mute?
Yeah. If you, I mean, if you all want to sit up at the table, that's perfectly fine. Do you guys want to sit up at the table? There's a nice comfy chair there.
Chair.
I have a hand.
Am I the only one who's gonna mention how y'all match? I mean, this is something right here.
All right.
I don't acknowledge Clemson.
I don't either, why?
Broke, and Steve has eaten it.
Seven oh one.
Seven oh, yeah.
And I would like to call the Finance Committee, and we'll call the Finance Committee with the joint Select Board to order, and we'll do a roll call. Dick Trussell. Dick, here.
Here, good.
Excellent. Michelle Vasquez.
Here.
Amy Kerrigan.
Here.
Joseph Milo.
Here.
Susan Smiley, here.
Hail, hail, the gang's all here.
If the members of the Finance Committee that are on want to turn their cameras on, they will then pop to the front.
Did you all hear that?
Want to see them, what do they want to see?
If you wish to be seen, turn your camera on, and you'll pop to the front, whatever that means.
Well, because see how it only shows a few on the screen, they then, yeah, we have.
I thought you were worried. That's fair.
You want her?
No, there haven't been any cuts.
All right. So.
I'm sorry, unfortunately, my laptop camera does not work any longer.
Oh my God, mine did that for a long time, too, but you're at least up toward the top of the screen.
As it turns out, you're at the top, anyway, so whatever you've done, stay with it.
Signed at four, six o'clock, so.
There you go, good. All right, so, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the FY twenty-four capital budget proposals and planning, project deferrals, and use of ARPA funds. So, with your permission, Madam Chair, are you, Kate, to take us through?
Yes, we'll yield to Kate, I think we said you had a presentation, pictures, and all kinds of good stuff.
Okay.
Yep, so, here we are, and Cheryl, Garapie Finance Director, is also on the call.
Cheryl, my office.
Hi.
There she is. Yes, yep, no problem, you can't see everybody on the screen, so. All right, so as you know, the town staff and I have been working on a brand-new type of budget for proposals and for final presentation format, and while the capital portion of the proposed budget is strictly related to larger-scale purchases and products, the aggregate data and the decisions which relate to what is funded and where and when work to inform the total financial picture for our town. Someday. That's just great. Okay.
Do you have fire copies of this, or just on the screen?
Just on the screen right now, but I will send it out after, and it will be attached in the packet. So, in the new budget format, capital projects have been classified in three separate and distinct categories. Tier-one projects relate to renovations or acquisitions which cost under fifty thousand dollars and have a useful timeframe of about two years. Often referred to as cash capital, these projects are generally funded inside the levy and do not necessitate borrowing or debt authorization. Examples of these types of projects would be small vehicle or equipment replacements, such as a staff car, sedans, or DPW mowers. Tier-two projects are considered as those which have a useful life over five years and a price tag of over fifty thousand, but under one million. Examples of these projects would be larger-scale dump trucks or ambulance replacements, the purchase of larger software packages like Gias or AutoCAD software platforms with multiple interfaces and user capabilities. Tier-three projects are reserved for those projects which span across multiple fiscal years and require debt authorizations in excess of a million. There are no two-tier-three projects for this fiscal year, but it's likely that the proposed high school building project will appear in this category in the very near future, as the school board and the building committees work to finalize a design and budget and bring it forward. So the capital budget process was first brought to the department heads in August of this past summer. The managers were provided with templates for a complete asset inventory and two separate and distinct forms related to either equipment acquisition or program or project proposals. So the details and nuances between these types of request sheets are seen here on this slide, but I think it's important to note and for me to thank the town staff for completing all of this. They hadn't, this town had not completed an asset inventory in at least twenty-five years, if not longer, that's as far back as anyone could recall, and so I think it's an excellent place to start, but it couldn't be accomplished without everyone working together, so I really do appreciate and want to convey how much work went into this on behalf of the town staff. This is a snapshot of what a capital request form looks like relative to equipment. So for each request, meaning each individual piece of equipment or software, the sheet is populated with the information, with the funding strategy, with the purpose and the additional information needed to justify the request. Also, as part of the process this year, which I hope will continue in years forward, the ability for each request to also have a priority level attached to it, either urgent, necessary, or desirable, and then once assigned, also, a request is further ranked by service impact to the organization, either the acquisition needed to maintain, to expand, or to enhance services. So these rankings helped when making requests and then aggregating those requests to determine necessity for funding. These projects that are urgently needed to maintain service levels, for example, rise to the top of the list, while others which are desirable and expand services clearly go to further down the list. This is a blank capital project request form, which is different than an acquisition of an asset. The requests on the first page are similar on the left, including project tier, priority levels, but the remainder of the form delves into timelines, phased funding strategies, and sources of funding, which take a deeper look at the longer-term effects of proposed projects, including budget impacts, both for revenues and expenses, and how the project serves a community and what specific populations may benefit from it. As discussed for several meetings now, the only available funding we have for this coming fiscal year is through the American Rescue Plan Act, also referred to as ARPA. Over four payments, the town netted a total of two million, four hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Sixty-five dollars.
Sixty-five dollars, I'm sorry. Of that, about six hundred thousand was used for projects which were emergency in nature. One project, which is here in red, which was an IT initiative, was removed just last month because the town received a grant from the state to work on this. So another special thanks to town's IT director, John D. Tomaso, who received the grant last month in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. This leaves about five hundred and, I'm sorry, this leaves about one point eight million or so in funding available. So for fiscal year twenty-four alone, the town received two point five four million in capital requests. Having graded and vetted each of the department projects by need and funding availability, the pages which follow here show a recommended project total of one point four one million. The allocation by percentage is seen here with the school department receiving a total equal to forty thousand, while the municipal town departments receive sixty thousand.
Percent.
Percent. I'm sorry, sixty percent. This breakdown relative to percentages in particular, and the high percentage allocated to town facilities, is due to several capital project years where facilities in particular have been deferred. In some cases, like the Old Town Hall basement, HVAC, and the flooding, projects have been deferred by more than fourteen years and can no longer be ignored, or if so, we run the risk of losing the building either in part or in total.
So, Kate, can we just go back to the pie chart? So, this represents what year again?
Next year, fiscal year twenty-four.
Forecast, okay, so, and that's based on the two point four?
So this equals one point four million dollars in projects. This is the recommendation.
So this is an approved, recommended pie chart?
Well, this is my, this is my recommendation as we are today. This is not bad.
Pie chart is a twenty-twenty-four budget TA recommendation.
Yes.
Thank you, okay, just.
Leaving still a million dollars in projects on the table.
Correct.
From the requests.
And about four hundred thousand dollars left in ARPA.
Right.
We've spent roughly four.
Six hundred.
Six hundred. I know, that was one before, okay.
Oh, I can go back.
I'm sorry, what was the one million on the table for?
Well, there was two point four million in requests, and this proposal is to address one point four million.
And what's the one million on the table being there for?
I'm just, there's two point four million requests, one point four million on the, so I'm just saying, there's two, one million of requests that are being unaddressed by the one point four million dollar plan.
To be determined.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, so we have a TBT.
I think we're, I'm assuming you're gonna take us through some of this stuff.
So we spent, right there, we spent around six hundred.
It's okay, no, it's okay.
So we spent six hundred thus far, and then that's how the.
That's how we get to one point eight.
Right.
Yeah, but, but as Kate said, there's two points, the forms and process earlier.
Two point five four.
Came up with a two point five four million dollar list of requests. The proposal, I'm assuming you're gonna take us through for the one point four million, which was that pie chart, is a bit of that two point five four of requests, but not all of it, obviously, because you don't have all the money.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was like, you're recommending.
So, Kate?
So, Kate, just on this one, can I ask, the school boiler replacement? We had voted that at town, we had voted two school boiler replacements at town meeting.
When?
Last, last year.
Repairs of the current boilers?
No, 150. Those are.
What was the replacement?
It was amended $35,000.
I'm sorry?
It was amended $135,000.
Okay.
And then, the select board voted to do the next $150,000 from ARPA.
Which is when I started. That was the first vote.
And so, that is this, that is this, that is these dollars, Scott.
That was.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So, the $135 was already. So, did, so Cheryl, I know we had voted boilers two years consecutively. Does that mean that we did not spend it, or is it in addition? So, in other words, did we spend $150,000, $150,000, $150,000, $135,000?
The boiler is far, far more expensive than $150,000.
No, I know. So, we had town meeting this last spring.
And it wasn't in the. Right, so this got added to it in April of this year.
So, we spent roughly $285,000 plus this money?
That's this, that's part of the $285. Cheryl, could you take us through it step by step, please?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, because I know three years we've talked about boilers and.
Yeah.
At a special town meeting, I believe it was before the annual town meeting, so I think it was June 21st. It was when, Jeff, not anyone's here, we put in $150,000 as a request for a capital boiler. It was amended at the special town meeting to $135,000. That was for fiscal '22, and it was spent, was that '21? '21, I'm sorry. And that was spent right away. They were waiting on that money, actually. We then, the select board approved another $150,000 through ARPA, and that money has been paid also in fiscal '22.
So, to be clear, Cheryl, the first $135,000 was just raised and appropriated, was taken out of town funds.
Yes.
And the second $150,000 was out of ARPA, which is why that's the only ARPA-related boiler amount on this chart.
I knew there was.
Correct.
And for the record, it was two separate fiscal years, and it was two separate boilers.
Correct.
It's both the elementary and the middle school.
Right, correct.
Correct.
So, we spent $285,000 today?
About $150,000 out of ARPA.
I thought we, I thought fiscal year 20, May 21.
Can I just suggest unless this is relevant to the moving forward plan? We could definitely ask questions about this stuff, but let's move forward, not worry about what gets spent too, unless we're asked to replace the same boiler a third time.
Well, I think we're just trying to get a picture.
We have a total picture. We're trying to understand the total picture.
Right, which I, I feel if we.
So, expenditures in total.
Well, we've spent $285,000.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, we've spent, my understanding, I did not, my understanding is we've spent $285,000 on boilers, two different boilers, two different buildings, $135,000 out of raised and appropriate, $150,000 out of select board. I say this is my understanding, because I was not on the select board before this happened.
And that's it, we're done. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, those are our boilers.
I understand this to be additional.
No, it's, yeah, this was, that's, it's complete, right after.
Awesome, you were talking about boilers for that time.
I can't promise it's not gonna come back.
Yeah.
But it's not coming back this year.
Right. Well, knock wood. Okay, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is it coming down that we have $1,821 before we start any review this evening?
Yes. But we have 2.54 million in requests, Dick. So, about one point.
No, we have requests, we have recommended.
Yes, yeah. So, Kate, I'm assuming was about to take us through her recommendations. But yes, her recommendations is to spend about 1.4-ish of the 1.8 that we have remaining. But she'll take us.
I have a lot of questions when we get there, so please, I'll lean my hand up.
I will, I will. Every chance I have, turn to you, Dick, and see if you have a question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm thinking if there's a lot of questions, it, it might be helpful to decide the collective board's purview, whether you want to do cost, like line item by, so this is, I'm calling this a cost center. So, these are capital requests. They're not all funded, but they're requests over the next, it's a five next fiscal years and the current budget under FY23, so it's a six-year look. So, I can go through all of them, meaning, you know, all eight cost centers, because there's general government, there's two for DPW, police, fire, facilities, and IT, or you can do them one slide at a time.
My preference, and I asked Sue for your committee, your preference, and my board colleagues, would be to get as much information out on the table as possible and then go from there. My one question to you, if that's okay with both boards, before we do, is ND on this, remind us the priority, what the coding is.
So, necessary, desirable, or urgent.
Got it, okay, thank you. So.
Yeah, I think I'd like to understand what we're talking about and asking for right here, right now, as a total picture, and then look at the out years, because I think the immediate need is now, right?
Correct, which is, it's green, is the immediate need.
So, but, so take us through the eight groups right now, and then we can have a full picture. Yep.
Yep.
Perfect.
Does that make sense?
Sure does.
You guys are getting that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I mean, granted, for all of us, this is the first time going through it, so if it's painful this year, it will be less painful next year.
Promise?
No.
Okay, let's ask.
Okay, so, all department requests from the sheets you saw before were aggregated and plotted out for a period of six years, which includes the current year and a five-year look. In cases like you see here, there's money allocated in the same amount over a period of several fiscal years. So, for example, the town clerk has limited to no record storage capacity. As a matter of fact, many of the permanent records for the town, including meeting minutes and town meeting actions from the 40s and 50s, are housed in banker boxes in the basement of the Old Town Hall. That basement leaks and in years past has sustained damage, which has destroyed some of the records. This is, as you can imagine, marked with an N for necessary and given priority funding, as we have both a legal and an ethical obligation relative to records and record storage.
Yes.
The other necessary funding here relates to updating the town's master plan, which ideally is updated and vetted every 10 years. The last master plan for Lancaster concluded in 2007, and so we are well overdue. There are some other ones that we put here in the desirable category, including the GIS components, which really work as us, as a self-serve for the community. It has the ability for people to be able to research in depth more their property and their neighboring properties, and where utilities are relative to that, where wetlands are. I think it will help better inform folks when they come in front of Conservation Commission or the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals relative to their, their property. And it, it kind of creates a partnership between town staff. We really haven't caught up on the GIS game, as it were, for lack of a better term, and I think it, it really will help streamline things. Conservation was money that's allocated every year. I think right now the Conservation Commission does, does a wonderful job of, you know, updating. But former Chairman Allison used to always say that conservation is not free, and he is correct. And therefore, you know, we need to allocate dollars to that. The Disability Commission came in front of this board in the form of a letter asking for money to mail, to, to publish and mail an emergency preparedness manual to each person in the community, or each household in Lancaster, and so that this is representative of that request. And for COA and Elder Services, that has to do with expansion for some of the bathroom facilities in the kitchenette that's down at the lower level or the, the ground floor level.
Is that making toilets for adults?
That's, that's coming up in, in another slide, but yes, that's under facilities. This is, this is more for equipment, so smaller, but yes, 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 that is coming. So, on that end, if you'd like me to just jump right ahead, the Community Center one says urgent, because in fact, the, both restrooms in the Community Center are not ADA compliant, and they are, if not the original, darn close to the original.
Toilet?
From the elementary school. They're very small and lower to the ground. And I believe someone, a number of people have written you letters, Chairman, period.
I received several correspondence.
Of just about the difficulty in maneuvering when it's so low to the ground.
I think you get the point.
So, this is, I know more about this, obviously, than I want to. It was a comment that I had made, and people did have a hard time because it's so low. Now, I wonder if we included the Commission on Disability, because they came in, and I had asked for this, exactly, and they, we got measurements, we got the town nurse, and they're 14 inches, I think, from the height. They fall, apparently, that they are considered ADA accessible. Now, that doesn't mean that they are ideal or comfortable, but because, so we were.
I'm gonna let you make that argument.
Turn down and, no, 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 no. And, and they were, they were redone when they redid the building, believe it or not. You could see the old thing. Now, that said, that said, I think certainly everything can use an improvement.
So.
We should ask the COD, that's.
Dick, well, yeah, I mean, I think there's general consensus the toilets need to be replaced, but, and work needs to be done. Dick?
Can it be explained what is going to be done at that Community Center?
Yeah, so.
For over $1 million?
Yeah, I have the same question for general facility administration. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is that the toilets?
No, so the $250,000 is for both bathrooms. It's a remodel for both bathrooms. That's at today's cost for supplies and prevailing wage. We'll have to bid that project, and we have to pay prevailing wage for plumbing, for electrical work, for anything water-related. Those are three separate prevailing wage sheets, and then tile work, should we want to have tile, which we should.
All right, now, it's a separate building in that memorial school, but how much of this is going to be affected if something is done in Memorial School?
So, the Memorial School?
They aren't connected.
Yeah, if we, I guess the, the short answer is, if we don't touch the bathrooms, nothing's gonna happen to them. I, I don't mean to be flippant, but not knowing doesn't change the fact that the bathrooms need to be redone.
Well, I'm not opposed to fixing the Community Center, but that's an awful lot of money to spend in a year when we don't have it.
Well.
So, so this isn't.
You mark, you market urgent.
It is.
And necessary.
Yes.
But, but has there been a study group as to how much, and have we got bids?
No, so, then, then we're not gonna go out to get bids until we know we're committing the dollars. And then we'll get bids. We'll have to get three, I'm assuming, from procurement perspective with.
Yeah, I mean, just, just so you know, when proposing capital requests, I went out and solicited actual quotations. This isn't me sitting in my office and making it up. I'm, I'm neither a plumber nor a bathroom remodeler or an architect. And so, that's based on, you know, current year's prevailing wage. But yes, we would have to, certainly, we'd have to go out to bid. Nobody's gonna bid on it unless it's an approved project.
My, my.
My, my concern is that if we approve all of it you're asking for, and I'm not saying we won't.
Yeah.
You'll only have $319,000 left in the ARPA account.
Yeah.
But I, we're playing that too close to the vest, I think.
At some point.
And then we're doing a little capital funds, and I don't want to see us get down that low.
Well, at some point, we have to get down to zero, or the federal government claws it back.
Yeah, but we have time to do that. We haven't even discussed DCAM or anything else yet.
For a year.
Yeah. So, I, I just wanna, I do want to point out, we, we all agreed, both committees, to give Kate a chance to go through all eight cost centers, and we've gotten through two. So, I hope we can plow through and then make notes, and then we can go back and do individual.
We don't usually rush through our finance committee meetings, so, I mean, usually, this is the point where we ask the questions, Steve. But, so, $250,000 is for two bathrooms?
Correct.
Male and female?
Well, but there's multiple restrooms in the bathroom. It's not just one toilet.
Yeah, but, but the two, took both male and, I think, that's all they have.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna.
And $30,000 was for what?
So, those are, that's for general facility administration. So, similar to what I had said in the last slide about town clerk, as I used it as an example, the ability to allocate a certain amount every year to, from capital to some type of improvement project is necessary. So, the general facilities admin is for all town buildings. So, for example, last week, the sprinklers blew up.
Yeah, no, no.
I mean, okay.
No, thank you, I just, I was just.
You're saying things that come up unexpectedly.
Yeah, that you have to address. I just, I want to point out, like, I'm, I'm not saying, I, I'm not saying don't ask.
Something throws a rock through a window.
I'm not saying don't ask questions. I think, I don't want people to prejudge one of these items over another. We've gotta get through all eight sections, and then we can go back and go into great detail. But I worry if we spend all our money in our mind early on, we're not having a chance.
We're here for six hours.
No, no, I hear you. I hear you. But Kate will.
I'm all munching back once I'm.
I still think we need to discuss a lot harder.
Well, we're going, we're going through that.
Yeah.
We'll get to that, Dick.
We can, yeah.
Sorry, but I agree with Steve. I think I'd rather have a quick overview of everything there is out there, and then let's go back and start reviewing the things that really had serious questions about. Let's get through everything that we see there, then go back and start revisiting everything. I think that would be much more productive.
Thank you.
Okay, and then $7,500, onto Prescott.
Yep, so.
So, I think what we're meeting is go through all of the eight cost centers, not each line item in this one.
Yes.
And then we come back to each group.
What do you mean they go through?
So, there's more slides.
So, there's, there's six more slides for different capital requests, for different depart, different sections. And as Kate pointed out at the beginning, then we, we agreed as two groups to go through the eight cost centers first and then go back and specific on specific ones. If that's not the desire of the boards, then that's fine, we can change that. But I want to give Kate as much direction as we can. I feel like it's best to get an overall sense of what all the requests are out there, and then we can go back and dig in in more detail. None of these slides are disappearing, so you can scroll right back to them, and we can dig into more detail whenever possible, if that's okay. Okay, hit it.
Highway. So, the superintendent is away, and so, it's likely that there may be some, some tweaks on this. But as a, as a means to, I guess, put a placeholder on what I was seeing in their capital requests that are needs, $50,000 was for tree maintenance, both town-wide and public shade trees and within the cemeteries. And then, another $10,000 for small equipment is there. This is, most of it is, as you can see on the left-hand side, their current inventory. And so, theoretically, what you can see in the future years there is just a build out of a, you know, time and replacement schedule, but that is definitely not set in stone.
Okay, so.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Nope, nope.
So, the sheet is a lot busier than the others.
Sure, they have more inventory.
Yeah, that's nice. So, their ask was 153, is that what I understand? And then, we're, we're just, so, the two recommendations are the 60, is that how I should read it?
Yep, correct.
We've got it.
So, for cemetery, cemetery division needs a new mower and some landscape tools. Those are in $16,000. That one isn't too bad. The public safety.
It says public work.
Public work, public.
Oh, that's, I'm, yes, I'm sorry, it's police, it's police. Last week, the fire alarm system in the police department malfunctioned, flooding more than 70% of the building's interior. And I am told that this isn't the first time that this has happened, so.
It happened during the grand opening.
So, while.
Seventy percent, seven, zero?
Yeah, the entire top floor, not the chief's office.
Ah, I smell a rap.
And, he's on the call.
Is there a rain on your parade joke here somewhere?
Oh, my God, that's such a great show.
Sorry, that's all of my contribution.
All right.
Thank you, that was enlightening. So, we're putting $50,000 in. I, I really would like to get an architectural understanding of what's going on in that building, why these things keep happening. I will say that insurance is taking a look at it, but because this has happened twice before, we're getting a little pushback, understandably. So, and Chief Hanson is here. It, twice it's happened, correct?
It happened during grand opening.
Three times.
Oh, okay.
When it first opened, this time, and then a couple years.
Okay, yeah, so.
All right.
So, something's going on that we need to. So something's going on um that we need to kinda take a look at. But um luckily, we were able to uh, you know, have the fire department right next door and it was sort of all hands on deck. Um, Chief Moody has a very um interesting video that he had sent. Uh, he told me they were installing showers in the hallway, um and that's exactly what it looked like.
I hope he didn't add more water to the problem.
No.
Thank you. Alright, what's next?
Um, even though this says public works fire, I don't know why it probably went that way, but I will fix that. There is, yes, yeah, yeah. But at some point, the, the town has some responsibility, as I'm sure you can imagine, to um not keep having the same problem, but figuring out, you know, the root of that. Um, so we're navigating that, it's, it's early in the time. But um, so this is um fire and EMS. Now, the reason that this says non-allocated is not because there isn't a worth, worthy project. There's an eight hundred and fifty, sorry, chief. There's an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar request here that was not put into anything because it relates to fire alarm receiving equipment. And I have asked the chief, so I know we're going through everything, but I asked the chief to um attend this evening so that he could better uh inform you all of that because it, it certainly is outside of my wheelhouse of understanding. And then this is the last one, which is the I T department. This is also busy um because thankfully John went through and sort of itemized our major assets. Uh, we didn't do every keyboard and mouse, but we did uh the servers, most of the monitors and, and, and network equipment. And so here, you can see in the future years, we're talking about, you know, a replacement schedule because that is generally speaking how you do future planning. Um, I also talk about right here, which is a townwide technology fund. Um, I don't envision a townwide technology fund staying forever, but right now, we don't know where the pain points are. So the idea would be that we're gonna tell the town, um basically, we need to spend about fifty-five thousand dollars on, you know, technology infrastructure all throughout town. And then those purchases or those, you know, um renovations would then be added to the things on the left-hand side and then put into the, the replacement schedule. It's um similar to depreciation. If um anybody works with sort of depreciation accounts, the idea is that you obtain an asset and then it depreciates over time so that by a certain amount, you know that you have to replace the a, uh asset at the new cost value. So um certainly, that's much easier to do with I T and with vehicles. It's not as easy to do with buildings um unless you itemize the systems and we are not there yet. So that's the final detail sheet. There's a, a couple of others that are sort of um the, the aggregate. This is um what I received from the school relative to Mary Rollinson and Luther Burbank. Um, this does not include the high school. Um, I put in the sheet that you all got and the one that was in the packet, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars simply as a placeholder. Um, I have, I have no idea if it's going to be less than that, it, it very well could be. I think it's good to put a ceiling of it can't be more than that. Um, but I, we, I don't have that yet there. Um, they've done a very good job of getting me this well in advance of what they usually have done in the past. So I, I do appreciate them doing that.
You have a spelling teacher? Just wondered.
Did I misspell something?
Replacement.
Oh, oh no, that's not mine, oops.
It's quite right. It's quite right.
It's not underlined red.
Let's keep going, let's keep rolling.
Oh, yep, okay, well, I just cut and pasted there, so, sorry. Um, okay, and so then this is just the aggregate, um so.
Can you do me a favor, are we missing something that's behind those folks? Can you move them over to the left? So that we're not. You just grab them and drag them over.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's this one, I'm using, I moved it on my own. There we are, oh, there you go. Yeah, so um this is the existing assets that we have and their trade-in value. So four point one million in assets, the trade-in value is not a windfall by any means. Um, so we have about four million that we theoretically should put on a depreciation schedule, which we would. Moving forward, this is the budget for this year, this is the requests, these are the recommendations. And so what you can see is two point five four in requests, one point four one in recommendations, deferred one point one three or forty-five or so percent.
And that's the one point one we're talking about, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Now.
There we are, see?
Shut up and listen.
Your words, not mine.
I can say it.
Um, and I just put this back here just as a point of reference because this is sort of where we started and this is the final slide, so I can go back to whatever you want or ditch it altogether, throw it out the window.
Uh, don't throw it out the window.
Now that you've put it in the, now that you've put it in the overall, do you wanna go back to the beginning and just quick ask questions?
Yeah, I mean, Cheryl and Dick probably have questions, so let's open.
Yeah, so let's frame the issue that I think we're trying to, the, the circle we're trying to square here, which is we, we have two point four, or five, four million dollars requests, we don't have that, that amount of money. So we're, we're A, not going to be able to um fulfill all of those requests. Uh, we have one point eight two one million or something like that to uh, to address those concerns. Um, there, the recommendations, one point four and change, that leaves us about four hundred thousand, is that right? Um, left, I definitely hear Mr. Trussell's concern about spending down when we know, we don't know that there might be an emergency coming up, I, I hear that. Um, and I think this does, it's a, it's a pretty good um chunk of change to left on the table that we have to spend within, I think, the next year or so, right?
Yeah, what is our?
It's a timeframe of three years.
I, I believe it, Cheryl, is it three years from receipt?
The last I heard, it was, it had to be spent by twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so, yeah.
When, Cheryl, like Ju- June thirtieth or?
Probably June thirtieth, yes.
That was the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, yeah.
Well, yeah, they're federal dollars and.
Federal, yeah.
Yeah, so which is September thirtieth, um fiscal year, but.
Um, so can we ask questions about this side?
We, so I just wanna continue just framing that. So that leaves four hundred thousand dollars on the table. This is a very thoughtful analysis, I think, to get to the one point four in recommendations. Um, uh, let me ask you a quick question since, chief, you're here, that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not in the one point four.
Not included, that's a, that would be something that we would discuss perhaps, some level of borrowing. That, that would be a tier-two project, most of these are tier-one.
Okay.
So um it certainly ties into the package and would change the aggregate sheets. It wouldn't change these smaller sheets here because these are funded cash or ARPA, which is.
Which is cash.
Cash versus a, a borrowing.
Got it, okay.
Um, but yes, and certainly can speak to that.
Do you wanna make any comments about that, just so we have that information while we're going through it and then I yield to any questions, folks, huh?
Yeah, I initially that was for F Y twenty-five to replace a fire engine.
Eight hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Speaking with my salesman, um fire trucks that are two to three years built. So he recommended I put it on next year's budget. We don't have to pay for it till it's built. Um, typically, we've been doing the lease program.
Right.
Where it's like fifty thousand a year for ten, fifteen years. So that's what would, I'd be asking for. That way, we'd get the truck replaced where it should be replaced and not be another two years. So we'd, we'd be four years behind. And unfortunately, the truck that we have, it's engine four, it had broken down last year, we had it repaired. And when they called E one to ask for a part, they actually said, what are you working on? There's only one truck in the country left in service of that model and it's Lancaster, Mass. And they said, well, that's what we're working on.
I think that was long as long as.
Well.
Well, the truck was, the truck was bought way before me in ninety-nine.
Oh my God, that was the one I bought when I was less than this, my God.
Wow.
It was your fault.
That must be better than you made profit.
In nineteen ninety-nine.
Profit when you made two, three years.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah, totally, well, totally.
So the, the ask would be, we would approve it with the lease, but we wouldn't have to pay for it until the truck arrived two years, three years later, which would put us right on track for replacing it.
Got it.
So I'm sorry, is the eight fifty for?
That's a different story, that was, yeah.
Or was it for?
I thought that was for.
That's for the truck itself.
Okay, gotcha.
So I thought it was alarm monitoring?
That was a capital project from a year ago.
Fifteen thousand, is that what?
Thirty, thirty-nine thousand, I think it was.
Just when we were talking, that's what I missed.
Thirty-nine.
That's perfect, so, oh, I see, got it. So if we're leaving the eight fifty, um like, if we're leaving that on our dress, that's fine because we're gonna be doing it through the lease program that you just talked about for next year, kind of, okay.
So the fire doesn't have anything that we're funding, is that what I'm understanding?
There's a, there was a request.
I don't see anything in the priority.
No, there isn't, right, yeah.
No, we, we approved the money out of ARPA for the ambulance early this year, which should be in, in January.
But for this summary, this.
Correct.
You're just socializing eight fifty, okay.
Yep, and that thirty-nine, seven was for uh radio boxes for all the town buildings for fire alarms. Um, hasn't been done yet because at the time, the town was a little tight and I thought they might need the money back, so I didn't go forward with the project.
But the money's been appropriated, right.
So I'm gonna move forward with it and the flip side of it is, they're a little expensive, but the town will not have to pay for monitoring costs. It goes direct to the dispatch and there's no monthly or yearly fee to monitor that.
I like that.
What do we pay for monitoring now, do you know?
I have no idea what each building pays.
I don't know.
But they're all third parties, so.
This was approved already, this is something that's been.
Yeah, and just.
So a lot of the forty thousand, we're gonna save something, there's an opportunity cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, she said, so I have a monitoring cost, just.
The pro, the boxes are about three to four thousand apiece upfront, but in the long run, you save by not having to pay a third party to monitor the alarm system. Dispatch will do it directly.
So you're looking at a, a brand-new truck next year. You're looking, it looks like another new something or other the following year and another new vehicle the following year.
Well, so that's my depreciation, so that's depreciation. So it doesn't mean, so that's not set in stone. What we're doing this year will do next year, every year, because what will happen is twenty-four become, goes up to the twenty-three column, you see? And then we'll, we'll project out to twenty-eight. The idea is to put our assets on a replacement schedule. So right now, what you see them at is our best guess of.
Yeah.
But it, it could be that in F Y twenty-five, the chief says, you know what, I think she's got a few more years of life left in her or not, M R.
That original five fifty was to replace that engine.
Yeah, we should generalize that.
I always call, I always, yeah, since I was a kid, my, my car was always a lady's name.
Yeah, the, the five fifty was originally to replace that engine and when I talked to the salesman, that's up to eight fifty, all because of COVID cost and the cost of doing things right now and getting materials.
I'm holding out strong that that's gonna go back in the direction that I wanted to.
To do respect to you, chief, nothing you're asking for is on the proposal we're considering tonight.
No, it just like.
Thank you so much for coming in.
That's why I'd ask Kate about putting the eight fifty on for this year because of.
No, and I, I do think that, that.
Wanted to explain it.
Yeah, that explanation was really helpful and, cause people will see zero and think, why, wait a minute. Uh, but that gives us a very good sense and, and tells the public about the leasing of the trucks and all, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, plus this gives us an outline of.
And so everyone knows, for some reason, they call it a lease program, there is no buyout at the end.
Right, okay.
For some reason, it's just a loan, I don't know why they call it a lease, but we don't pay anything at the end, the last payment.
But by the time we're done paying it off, you don't really want it.
It's nineteen ninety-nine.
Alright, thanks, chief.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
But just to be clear, if in fact that is something we move forward, it would be on a, a different schedule. You'll see a fifty thousand dollar amount.
Yes.
It just isn't cash.
Got it, yes. Okay.
I'm sorry, I have to go back to the first one.
Yes.
Alex had questions on.
So we'll do, Alex, I've got some questions, and Dick, if you've got questions, and then we'll just, we'll go select person, finance, select person, finance. Alex, you're up first.
Um, okay, so just in general questions, a lot of these, because this is ARPA, I know we have a lot more flexibility, but things, for example, like the um ten thousand dollars from the Disability Commission for Printing and so on, that's not ta, as a traditional definition of capital. I know you went through that, it's just, but we're putting these, would, going forward with different capital plans, ARPA's our funding source, would we still expect to see things like that on this? And I know there's nothing budgeted for C O D right now, um would on.
Here is, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
Is the current one.
Yes, so you would, uh, you, my, my tier-one and the way that I usually do that is things that are over five thousand dollars and that are either with a life of more than two years or it's project-based. So this is a project that they've put together and it theoretically is a, a one-time or, you know, one-time every, I don't know, ten years or something. And so I wouldn't put that into an operating budget because it's not an operating expense, uh, because it doesn't reoccur. So I, the ability for you to see things like this, it wouldn't be this exact one, but something like that, an initiative would be in capital. It would just be in a tier-one.
Okay, so more, I'll think, I think of it as like a special project, since you, something you talked about. Um, you're gonna give us these with some of the breakdown. The other thing is when we talked about the high school and your overview coming up, which we have to be mindful of. Also, the library, town meeting approved that study, which is ongoing, right?
That's in the next slide from here.
Right, right. Um, and in your next slide, which I think, sure, you can go to the next one if you want. General, I know we gotta go back, the general facilities administration, thirty thousand dollars.
Well, so it, it isn't for people, it's for, it's for any building, so I know it's.
No, I understand that, yeah, yeah. Um, and you explained that it would be unanticipated repairs and maintenance, it sounds like, or repairs?
Or anticipated, but ones that are things that go through multiple buildings. For example, um, I don't know, say, we need to replace all of the fire extinguishers in every building.
Right, you, you said like if somebody broke a window or something?
Oh, right, yeah.
So if, so if somebody, so there's nothing in the budget now for general repair from, for buildings, it looks like? Is, or I mean, I know there is, but I guess it's just in there?
Small dollars, so um, you know, each building has maybe, I think Prescott has um a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the building for the whole year.
Right.
And it's heavy about dollars.
Yes, so it had been, I thought it had been consolidated, and this is just me coming up to speed. I thought we had consolidated all the um facilities costs under one budget bucket.
It's true, the facilities budget, but there's not really much in it.
Okay, um, so rather than, so this is something that we would expect every year with just different funding sources?
Yes, or.
Now, why would that not just be in a regular budget because it's an ongoing expense?
Because therefore theoretically for things that are either a one-time or it's a, it's a moderate to larger repair.
It's not just for replacing light bulbs that you're gonna anticipate.
Sure, so like. It's just that we have a bunch of old buildings, so we always have.
Right, so the idea is to classify that as capital because that's an investment in the building versus the operation. So the operations through the general fund should be just that, what it's to operate. So if we are doing something like scanning documents to create permanent records, that isn't an operational expense necessarily. It would be something as an investment in whatever the department's mission and goals are. I think it's just a different way of looking at it. And again, this is just, this is my way of breaking the budget down from the gentleman who gave a dollar that wanted to have a different type of budget. So, I mean, this is just what I'm used to, both from schooling and past practice, but if this doesn't work, we can.
No, it's been, it's been helpful, it's just, as we transition from our previous budgets.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Um, how they integrate and how we do it.
The problem is with putting things like this into the operating budget is then people then see a much larger number for an operation than what is really needed. Because there might be years, like I put a hundred thousand dollars to, just as a placeholder in future years, but it could be that it's less than that if we're doing the maintenance that we're supposed to be doing or if we are able to itemize it because we're doing a depreciation account, so.
And you run the risk of people thinking you're overfunding something.
Yeah, you run the risk of saying it costs five hundred thousand dollars for the facilities department and then when in actuality, what we spend to operate that department is really two hundred thousand and three hundred of it is project-based or to, you know, either to maintain or improve upon.
Right, you make different decisions when budgeting, right, if that's, if that.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, it's just, I know that there hasn't been a year or a building that hasn't required something. So as we haven't been allocating it through capital, we've been doing it, I thought, through the general budget process, so not seeing that. I was trying to reconcile the transition. so not seeing that, I was trying to reconcile the transition. But, okay, I'm gonna just, most of my questions, I'm gonna have to look at this and then.
Alright, Dick?
Yes, I have three questions. The first one is, and I think I heard something at the beginning from Kate, has CPA been involved in all of this? Or did you avoid it? Or I'm not, I don't mean avoid, trying to avoid, or just not taking, not taking into consideration.
It is not.
Right, I have not taken that into consideration. I know that CPA has the ability to do some things in the buildings, but I think we need to be very careful about the types of projects that we utilize CPA funding for, because.
Well, my statement on it is that the ARPA funds seem to be used for a lot more variations in funds than the CPA funds would be allowed to use. So if we can use CPA, we're basically freeing up more for use by the town. Now, my estimation is that this, the sixty-five percent will be somewhere around a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And if that's true, and you want for the library, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, is that not a match? I mean, they are, I want the library work done, but twenty-six percent of the money is state money, not ours. And I would like to see something historic.
Sure.
Which the library is funded by money that can be used against historic.
So that's, that's what I.
Where is, what's wrong with that thinking, I know there's something wrong, what's wrong?
So it's, it's not wrong, it's just that, what, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for, basically to bring the project that they're doing now, which is the assessment, basically the facilities assessment, through to construction drawings and then for bid and construction oversight. Neither of those, both bidding, drawings and construction oversight, are eligible for CPC. So when and if we get to later on, down when you see FY twenty-five, you can see one point five million, it's possible that part of that would be fitting some of the CPC guidelines under historic, but the pre-planning to get.
I mean, the only thing that isn't is that I, that I can understand is the ACHMAP, everything else and the carpet, everything else seems to be historic.
In the one point five.
No, it's not anything.
In the one point five, but not to, not to have construction oversight and as-built construction drawings. Those are not eligible expenses.
Alright, you know better than I. Next question's on Prescott building for seventy-five hundred.
Yep.
Is that, is that not eligible as a building?
Correct, because it is for security cameras and gutters, neither of which have a historical component.
Alright, well, you had nine thousand dollars left over from the old budget and the special funds for moving the safe. And I was told that the only person who can move that money around was yourself, the sheriff. Can that nine thousand dollars come out of that, because you're never gonna move that safe till you tear the building down, you know that.
Huh, I don't.
Can you real, can you real, can you that money is my question?
Cheryl, I defer to you, I didn't know we had nine thousand to move a sink, and I gotta get.
The nine thousand.
Safe, oh, I'm sorry, safe, okay, sorry.
Nine thousand was used, it was a repair in the Prescott, I can't remember what it was.
So that money's gone?
They're saying it was used, so.
Yeah, there was a repair that had to get done in the front block.
So that no longer exists in any funds?
Correct.
The Prescott building is fully used, all this money?
Yeah.
Alright, and the last question is, and I'm sorry, I have a little trouble hearing, but can you break down the eight hundred and fifty thousand for vehicles, less the three hundred and fifty for the ambulance? Where does the other five hundred thousand come from?
Can you tell me what sheet?
Are you looking at the?
Is it fire?
It's a whole combination, it's the last entry, it's a very bottom entry for eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, right there.
There it is, right there. Fifty-four, miscellaneous equipment, now that's small equipment, large equipment. I'm gonna assume there's no chapter ninety in there.
No, not for fire.
Just because I think it's a public.
Oh, it says public.
Three hundred and fifty thousand is for the ambulance, where's the other five hundred thousand?
The heading is wrong, Dick, it's just supposed to be fire EMS.
Yeah, it's, it's not supposed to say public works, I apologize. It just, it's just supposed to say public safety, fire EMS.
And the eight fifty was put in as a placeholder for a new engine, but Chief Hanson explained that we will take that up in a lease agreement at fifty thousand dollars a year or thereabouts in the next, in the next year.
That's the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars we move every year for the old equipment. I still don't understand the five hundred thousand in there.
He wants, he's suggesting a future, an upcoming engine.
Are you, oh, so you're saying the five hundred thousand under FY twenty-six, you don't understand?
No, the eight fifty.
I don't know, but we, every year, there's a hundred and seventy-four transfer to pay for the old equipment. So if we're buying new, wouldn't it also be a transfer, an addition, a transfer, not a full transfer?
I give that one to Cheryl.
So, for the purpose of this discussion, Dick, if you look under amount allocated, there's zero dollars. For the purpose of this discussion of ARPA money and capital. So the fire department's asking for nothing for this discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a worthy and valid question to ask about the eight fifty and the five hundred, if you'd like, and I'm sure Cheryl can answer.
Where's the three twenty-four reference? I think that's another thing that's troubling, I'm just trying to understand where the three twenty-four is for the ambulance that is.
That's in the previous, that's in the earlier ARPA countdown where.
But I think he's just asking.
Oh, I see.
Oh, well, because, okay, so, because this is cash capital, so when you see the total, which is the larger one that I had sent.
Yep.
So this is cash capital, so that was three hundred and fifty, so it's, it bumps it into the next.
Tier.
Tier, a tier-two project.
So this is all different than what you're showing us?
It just, that's all of it included, that's all of it like aggregated, yeah.
So what you're saying is that the papers you sent us, entitled fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-eight, capital improvement program, are superseded by what's here on the screen?
There, it's a, it's a different plan. So this is the snapshot of both tier one and two. What I'm going through.
Through a million five, and it's a million five every year over the five-year plan. And I'm wondering where we expect to get a million five after ARPA is gone?
That's, that's a very good question. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, okay, but this is part of the biggest problem that I'm seeing, you get a million five for that, I'm counting, you spend a million four for school, and you come up short a million of the year. Where is it coming from? I mean, and I'm not making a point to push anything, but Royden, the people need to know where we expect to get this money from.
Free cash is where we've been getting it from.
No, I mean, that's, it's a very valid question.
Maybe there's an override for twenty-five contemplated too, Dick.
Oh, no, no, there is not, God help us now.
Well, the whole point is to not, not charge the people anymore than we have to. And that's a whole different debate, but right now, we're looking at a million five from ARPA, which would leave us three hundred and nineteen thousand, and then we're done, there's no more special fees.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
That concerns me that we're looking out as though we had a source for the money. And the plan is tremendous, it's what we've been begging for, but now, how are we gonna fund it?
That's the larger question, right? I mean, that's like, knowing what the exposure is and what the need is is really important. It does then highlight the fact that you just pointed out, Dick, is that we know the need, we have it in concrete numbers in front of us over a series of years, but we don't have a method to pay for it.
We haven't, and I don't want to get upset, but we haven't even talked about DCM, and that will take money if we decide to do it, we haven't, that's a.
Yes. Different meaning all the other. Yes.
I wanna get away from that, but I'm concerned.
No, yeah, it's, we're all, I think we're all concerned, and.
Yeah, it's, no, he's exactly right, I mean.
So, we, I share your concern and, and wanna make sure that we tackle that, but we still have to tackle the question before us about the immediate capital needs that are urgent.
Yeah, I'm not trying to get away from that, I apologize.
No, it's quite alright.
Dick, did you have a third question?
No, that's it.
Michelle, do you have any questions?
For now.
Or, or do you wanna go back?
No, no, you can go.
Let's figure it out. Michelle, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good for now, I think, because I squatted a few, no, dressed things I would have asked.
Okay.
Awesome. Anyone in the room?
Yeah, I've got questions, so, but I'm, I'll take my turn.
My concern, my questions will revolve around where we're gonna get the money, so I will defer those to a different conversation.
I think just time understands. Can we go back to the first sheet, Kate?
Like the overall one or first first?
The first already?
Yeah.
There is general government.
I just went too far. Yes.
Alright, so.
Bye, chief, thank you.
Bye, chief.
I'm sorry, what's the, I missed the master plan funding for fifty K?
Yes, yep, so towns are supposed to do a strategic master plan every ten years, and our last one was completed in.
Two thousand and seven.
Seven, so we're.
So it's supposed to be done in twenty seventeen.
So that's for that, and that's.
And that's good because.
Is that consultants, is that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and that's actually part, very, very part-time because our planning director is very interested in working on that. So generally speaking, master plan can run anywhere from a hundred and seventy-five to three hundred thousand, depending on how much you wanna do, if you don't have somebody that is on staff. But Jasmine is more than capable and quite excited to do it, so it could be less than that, but I, I don't know. The last master plan was done, I don't wanna, it was done a very long time ago, and so there's a lot that's changed as far as gathering the information from people and the use of technology, and we don't own that type of technology, and so it would be having a third party.
That was done volunteer-based too, that was, with some help from planning, but it was.
Well, because I remember we had master plan somewhere along the line, and Cheryl, maybe you'll remember, but maybe to your point, it was all volunteer, it was never funded.
I found most of it wasn't, we had a water and sewer plan that we funded, there was different things that we'd used consultants for, and at one point, we used a master plan.
So this is the oblig, like, we're obligated to do, yeah, the strategic master plan, so those other ones, you know, open space and rec.
No, this was the comprehensive one, to fix, yeah, open space and rec.
And then there's a housing production plan that was done too, that was a volunteer one, which is great, they're all great, but, so this one is, would have all of those sort of as components of it.
Then what's, what's the conservation money for?
So that is just for general use in conservation land, so one of the things that happened. Well, one of the things that happened at town meeting, yeah, is that the community voted to have a certain amount of money for them because they had beavers that created damage in a neighborhood and it was flooding the neighborhood, so things like that. Trail maintenance, trail markers.
Seriously, yeah, I'll say, call the EPOs and we'll.
They did, well, they called a trapper, but it was on public land, I gather, right?
Okay, that's all I need to talk, thank you.
I just said, Tom, do your thing.
Next, next sheet.
Next sheet.
So the two fifty gets us right up to the build stage for the library?
Correct. Now, we've already.
Dick, did you hear, I'm sorry, did you hear that, Dick? I wanna make sure, because I know you had questions about the library, it's two hundred and fifty K, bring it right up to the build stage.
Yes, I, I hear.
Okay, alright.
Not satisfied, but I hear.
Okay, I just want you to hear.
So how much do we allocate at town meeting for the feasibility, was that?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five then?
So it was a feasibility and assessment, just so you know, because they're doing a, I guess, an assessment of the utilities that are in there.
Okay, and then after that assessment, it will direct this two fifty?
Which we wrote the RFP in a way that would allow, providing the library trustees and the director are satisfied, the same contractor to go through it, so we would not have the expense of rebidding that.
And the fifteen K for the fire was for carpets, is that what I heard?
What is the other facility for a hundred and twenty thousand, memorial school?
Where do you see the hundred and twenty, Dick?
Yes, they, that, that was asked for, but, so you're talking about under FY twenty-four. It was requested to do a design for the use of the memorial school based on the, that committee's last meeting, to have it for recreational purposes, I believe.
That, that committee only suggests, that's not a, that's not a finalized thing, why are we spending money on something that hasn't been finalized?
We're not gonna.
That's why it's not, it wasn't amount allocated, it's just there.
Everything they've approved or suggesting is in green in the column.
Well, no, everything, Kate's.
Alright, alright, I've brought it, I've had.
It's just my recommendation.
Yeah, everything that Kate's recommending is in the green column, then you have input, we have input, we ask questions.
I, I just, I wanted to capture all of the requests. You know, so.
Huge requests with suggestions.
So fire, I just, what's the fifteen for the fire station, what's the thirty for the parks town, that's all, I just, I missed your.
So the fire station, no, 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 that's fine, the fire station was for secure, they need door key codes, they need a new alarm system and security cameras. That was done in the police station, but was not done in the fire station.
And then the parks with thirty K?
That is the continuation of the fair memorial, is it fair memorial field that's in the back? They were doing a master plan there, of which part of it was the playground, et cetera. They're looking at repointing the ball fields and repurposing or resurfacing the tennis court.
And so what's the categorization over there?
Desirable.
And so that's not anything that, will that fall in the CPE?
So that's not.
Because it's recreation.
It's recreation if you had the remainder of it, the issue is, right now, is that CPA has, Cheryl, is it a hundred, like a hundred and eighty thousand? In CPA currently?
Dixon wants it.
It's just under two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so once you give the ten percent to each of those categories, then you can use the remainder for any of those three plus recreation. And this, this takes into account the number of requests that are received and where that may rank. So, again, it's, this is not saying that we're writing a check tomorrow for thirty K, it could be that this is an additional cut, I don't know.
But I just wasn't sure, they're coming to present to us, you guys have had that opportunity, we haven't, so I don't.
They have.
So is that to actually do it, study it, engineer it, the thirty K?
That would hopefully be able to do resurface, providing that when they do the boring holes, that the underneath is in good enough shape.
Of the tennis court?
Of the tennis court, and the.
Because it was eighteen thousand about twelve years ago, that's why I'm thinking thirty thousand isn't gonna get us back, but, I don't know.
Here's to hope.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Well, part of it too is with a more robust recreation program, which we're having, we're generating more money, so the idea would be to utilize.
And that will remain a community park, right, not like a statewide, you know, like, regional park on our one-way street, I hope. And that will remain a community park, right, not like a statewide, you know, like, regional park on our one-way street, I hope, with no traffic.
We're, we're going to have a lot of parking in your backyard.
Yeah, well, I don't have a 4D.
Okay, what's nice?
It would be a community park, yes, yeah, no, yeah.
Good, because we don't have the infrastructure for much more than that. Okay, thank you, I just want to know. Can we go to the next sheet?
Yep.
Okay, any questions?
Okay.
Johnson, do you have any questions?
Ooh, sorry.
I was just wondering if you, what we weren't on.
A dump truck, a catch basin truck. Well, I, so that's why I preface this with, Kevin Bartlett is away, his daughter's getting married, so he is, he's been away for a little while.
His dog's in to get married?
Yeah.
Certainly, hopefully.
So anyway, he's been away, so it, it's possible that, you know, this is what was presented on, on his sheet, he did, he did a good job. I just haven't been able to connect in the past couple of weeks with him.
So when, when we connect with them, and they need a lot of equipment, a lot of their equipment is very antiquated, so I'm not, not, yeah, is that, but the catch basin cleaning used to be subbed out, so...
Did someone just listen?
He was just talking, she was just talking about a catch basin.
They requested, they requested the, the truck, yeah, we just, it's not in the green, which doesn't mean it can't be.
I understand, and I just, and it maybe...
And maybe it's not in the green because they're subbing it up.
Yeah, maybe they do want to sub it out, I don't know, but this question.
Alright, no more questions on the sheet.
Cemetery?
Yeah, I, I have one.
Oh, sorry.
If you go back on that shade tree down at the bottom?
Yep.
You can get all the way down to the bottom? That, that is separate and distinct from the cemetery shade tree, is that correct? We, we agreed, I think, on that sign, then, to separate the town from the cemetery.
Well, that's, yeah, the cemetery's the next...
I, I did not, I did not do that. I did separate the...
Because last year it got, it got confused.
Okay, so I did...
I want to make sure that the cemetery has their money to, to maintain it.
So I did separate, we did separate highway from cemetery as two separate, but when it came to trees, I lumped it all into one because if we're purchasing and maintaining trees, it, I guess it stands to reason that we do it all under one contract regardless of whether it's on the side of the road or in one of the cemeteries. So I lumped it all into one.
I don't know, Kate, we, we made pretty specific that the money would be in on the cemetery and the rest would be in, in the other one.
So what if I just did 25 and 25?
Alright, I said much, thank you.
We did allocate money in the operating budget for separate cemetery and roadside trees.
Right, which is different from this.
Alright, so...
So then this is in addition?
Yes, this is in addition, but it, but it can easily be 25 and 25 in, in each bucket, I mean, it's...
So that was for cutting trees down, but this looks like it's for...
This is for replacing and, and maintaining and pruning.
Why don't you have the conversation with Kevin and see how that money divide, their request...
That I know they need 50, well, they wanted 53.
If they, if some of it's specific for cemetery...
It is, I just lumped it all in.
I'm saying, just have the conversation, if you have to move over to, to move over a certain amount, move that.
So the total won't change?
Right, right.
Between public works.
It won't change on the, on line anywhere.
Right. Okay, I can do that, yep.
Perfect.
Thank you, I forgot that.
Alright, next.
Uh, next, sorry. Cemetery.
Alright, turf machinery.
So that would be a walk-behind mower and a backpack leaf blower and a weed whacker.
Electric?
I would hope so, we have a bioelectric policy.
Not what we're all supposed to do?
Yeah. It predates me, but I know it's been being followed.
Okay.
Okay.
Next.
Next. Police? So again, this is for just the building is here. They are replacing a vehicle, although we've had a very difficult time finding a hybrid, just availability-wise, so. We're still working on that, but that was previously allocated, that's why it's in current budget, and then the other numbers that we put in here is for, like I said, the replacement of the fleet on a more systematic basis.
But that is not part of the discussion we're having, right?
No, it is not, sorry.
Don't want to get us confused.
He's ready, he's moving on, are we good here?
Next.
We did fire.
Nothing here, next.
Faster.
Next.
Sorry.
I was saying, you're going to be okay.
Well, no, but we've looked at fire zero like 17 times. Any questions about the IT 55,000?
And again, this is the same, that it's in a lump sum theoretically for next year, but the, the hope is that it works out to a more defined depreciation schedule, which you could see in future years.
But this is a nice compliment for getting some upgrades.
So do we, we have five servers?
Yes. Yes, yep.
And no unique software, I don't see any software.
We have a lot of unique software, but it's not...
Well, it's not.
In there.
I don't see it here.
We do not, it, most of it's cloud-based, we are looking for that GIS.
Yeah, that was, that's engineering service.
Yep, so the other things that we use are, other than Microsoft, are cloud-based.
So where in the, is, do the subscriptions to all the department-specific software go back to their budgets?
No, it goes to IT, remember, we aggregated all of those, that's in operating, yeah, but they are, they are line by line, so that you know what they are.
Okay.
You know what I mean, so it's, instead of just saying subscriptions, it actually names the subscription.
It's not pertinent to this discussion, and I don't want to upset Mr. Kerry.
You're not going to upset me, I just feel like, there's a lot to discuss.
I will talk about that after.
There's a lot to discuss, and this isn't, I want us to not get bogged down in the operating budget and confuse...
I don't think we're confused.
I, if I were paying attention at home, I would be, so.
Well, I have one question, this is why, this isn't part of the operating budget, but I will let it go.
No, no, so, so the, this, I agree with you that every year, which is why Kate did this capital project, we should be looking at the capital needs for the town, at, at the same time we're doing the operating budget, which I think is fantastic. I'm just saying the purpose of this meeting tonight is not to discuss the operating budget for FY24. But I agree with you that looking at everything through the same lens, because by the way, no matter what you call the dollars, they're all...
Non-existent.
They're all existent, the same dollars are the same problem.
Like, when you see a reoccurring expense, that would be like typically an operating expense, not an actual expense, unless you were buying something new.
No, I agree with you, yeah.
Uh, I don't, because it's...
Well, if you know it's occurring every year.
Well, it, but it's, it's something different, so just because it's here in a lump sum doesn't mean that it's the same thing.
That's why when I asked about the, met the...
So what we know of as reoccurring expenses like subscriptions are in the operating, but since we are going to be replacing different desktops, just similar to the way we replace different vehicles, different cruisers every year, this will be the same, so the 55 that's here is a placeholder because I don't have a depreciation schedule to work from. But in future years, what you'll see is, we're going to replace one server, one laptop, one monitor, and so the reoccurring expense would be on different things. Does that make sense, Michelle?
It does, but for me, I still would consider it kind of my operating expense because they're smaller. It's not, it's not a $10,000 expense per se all the time, because you're rolling in, you know, software subscriptions, and computer expenses and stuffs, but...
So this is, this is hardware, but one of the things is that I set the threshold, just so that you know, at 5,000, and that is actually something Cheryl and I talked about, I know, we're getting off topic, so I'm sorry. Just indulge me for a moment, Mr. Chair. It, is that the, I think the finance committee, it would be helpful, you know, in the future to have some type of idea of what the thresholds are going to be, so right now, tier one is at 5,000, is, is that a reasonable amount? Should it be less, should it be more?
I'm good with it, I'm, I'm not here to like, get this, no, I'm fine with the 5,000, so.
Okay, because I mean, some people have, some communities have 10, some have 50, I, I did it because I just feel like if we're spending 5,000, given our financial climate, we need to have a discussion about need.
Any other questions on IT?
I hope one day that will change. On the, yeah, on the laptops upgrade one year or as needed, does that mean that we're buying one laptop a year or we're upgrading them every year? I'm assuming it's...
So, so he hasn't, he, he, I'm sorry, I, the IT director has bought laptops as needed. We, we generally speaking do not have them in stock because we haven't had the means to do that. That said, Cheryl's computer crashed, was it last week, Cheryl?
Yes, last Wednesday.
Yeah, and I personally had a complete bird about it, so the idea would be to purchase or refurbish one every year so that we have a backup, because what happened is that Cheryl literally couldn't work and all of this was between our shared drive, and then I couldn't get on it.
She's on a laptop, you're saying?
Well, she didn't, she is now.
Is that what the 55,000 is covering?
No, 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 it's kind of all those things.
It's covering all those things.
$55,000 laptop, no. It's in, it's in the 55,000.
No, I, no, I'm just, if it's not in the 55, I just want us to keep my role.
I'm sorry, it's not in the 55.
Exactly, so, no, it's not in the 55, that's my point. So now we're discussing other stuff that's, this, if this room doesn't know what we're talking about, then what do you think the people at home will?
In general, that was a good question.
It was a good question, but off topic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Given my recent situation...
Then I get to ask, what's in the 55 later?
I just don't see it's unreasonable to have at least two laptops and two desktops available.
Well, I said what? Don't get greedy.
You won't get an argument from me on that, I just want to make sure we're focused on what the conversations we're having tonight about, but you're not going to get an argument from me on that, Cheryl.
So, so I don't give Steve Agina, can we...
I just like to...
Can we look at later, or can we just see what kind of a breakdown, just to understand the 55,000?
Yeah, I, you can, I just don't know it right now, because we're still trying to assess what fires that we're trying to put out.
Yeah, that's just, no problem.
But yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions about the page that we don't know what it's for? Okay.
What?
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, next, what's the next page?
That's it, isn't it?
Huzzah.
I take back my charming comment.
No, you don't.
I do.
Oh, the school, so...
We already did that one.
So what was there?
Now, the fuel transfer pump set is in fact not a boiler, but it's still in the boiler family related.
I thought we'd agreed never to say boiler again for those things.
The transfer is misspelled too.
Yeah, alright.
Sorry.
When you see it, you can make a note.
They did hold the most expensive item, which was the existing conditions assessment, that was 350,000. Because I just said...
Is there a deadline on that, okay, to your point?
I believe that what you will see from the school this coming year is a position that they're calling the house doctor, which is for, shared between all three districts, all the buildings, and somebody that is on staff to assess and sort of aggregate all of their systems and put them on a depreciation schedule, et cetera, et cetera, so. Similar to the facilities team, but one that is, I think, more techni, more technical with age back. I know that they're proposing that, whether it's outsourced or whether it's another FTE, I don't know the answer to that. And I think that's why the existing conditions assessment is on hold.
Okay, great.
And what's the SI column or S1 column with all the Ms. in it?
So that's to maintain.
Okay.
Yep.
So the house doctor is just a charting or an overview of their building conditions, or is it a software, a human being?
I believe it's a human being.
So they have a facilities director, but that's different than...
But again, they're putting that in the operating, so that will, I'm sure, generate questions from...
So everything the schools asked for, they're getting, for 309,000 plus the 325?
Yes.
Again, this was...
And what was the spend last year? Cheryl, do you know her?
On capital? Well, the boiler, the boiler.
Cheryl?
And this, yeah.
Do you know the school's capital last year?
We didn't have any last year other than the boiler.
Thank you.
So 293, is that what we said it was?
285.
285.
295.
295.
We're 290.
But...
Okay.
Okay, and then this is just the aggregate that we already went over, and then the other one is the pie chart, so if you...
Can we leave it here?
Oh, we can leave it here.
Okay.
I like it.
Here's where we are.
So what time is the total?
Great job, Kate.
Let the sonic cell, so quick, total for FY23?
This is a picture of that.
That's money that's already...
I didn't know if you had it on, so...
I will, just a minute.
What is the offsets?
908.
Uh, one more time, Dick?
What, what constitutes the offset, the 110,000?
That's the, that's the value of our equipment after depreciation, right?
Our trade-in value.
Trade-in value.
I'm sorry, say it one more time?
That's the trade-in value of our, of our assets, so basically, we're going to depreciate about 4 million.
Makes sense.
I thought you said you were going to hold on to most of your trade-ins.
We are, but the idea would be that when it depreciates, instead of maintaining it, we, we basically trade it in and then we use that.
Off the depreciating basis, okay.
Yeah. So folks, here's where we are, 2.54 million dollars in requests, 1.4 million dollars in recommended that we've just gone through, which does then defer a lot of probably really good projects, 1.1 million dollars worth of them because we don't have the funds to do that. Let's be clear, the ARPA money is a big benefit to the community to have these dollars, because if we didn't have the ARPA money, we'd have 2.5 million dollars in deferred capital because we don't have any money for capital. So, here's where we are. Does anyone, anything glaring that people want to discuss or...
Yeah, I mean, I just question or comment, not, we don't have to discuss it, but to go from 908 to 2.5 and then our operating budget has gone up, I guess, I'm just trying to understand, is this going to be a trend that we're going to be using going forward? Like, it seems like we're going for the gusto on everything, and it may, you know, again, you're the first year, right, going through this, so I think we've seen it a few different times, and so, yeah, I mean, are we, are we, does this get us to like level set or give us more, I think the people on the call, maybe, you know, all this expenditure, right, and I know you all are chanted. Alright, so I'm just trying to understand, is that something that will be a regular norm? Are we going to get accustomed to spending in this trend? You know, there was a lot of out years for, you know, the 100,000 here, right, and we keep it going in the 30,000, so. I guess, what kind of messaging for me as a finance committee chair, this, the board setting on this expenditure, be it capital or...
So, I, I would just say, look, that we had to do the analysis that we've done, we had to, we had to know where we were, we had to level set on all of the need out there. I don't necessarily think because there's a request, like, it's, like, that 980 or whatever it is in FY23 is not, to say it went from 900 to 2.5 million is totally different, given that the 2.5 million is a result of a separate project that involved Kate working with every town department to determine what their needs are at different tiers and at different levels of need from necessary to, to desirable and to urgent. This just gives us the 2.54 million, gives us the sense of the outside number of what the need is, and the resources we have And the resources we have do not meet that number. It doesn't mean if we spend the one point four recommended, that there'll be one point four million in capital needs the next year.
There absolutely will not.
They will not be, they will not be. Like, you're not going, you're not, just like when you spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the boiler, you're not gonna spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the boiler again the next year.
I just didn't know if we're gonna be tri- you know. Well, what else signs two point five every year, every budget?
The last four fiscal years, because I used. I used that as a look back.
Yep.
The actual amount in capital budgeted was zero. And so all of the capital that was spent was reactionary. Either something broke or something was necessary and deferred to the point of not being able to defer it any longer. And it either came in front of special town, uh, a special town meeting, or in the case of ARPA, in that way. I can say, just anecdotally, the cruiser that was put in that's in the budget now, that was funded through ARPA, was deferred from one year to another. And now, because it was deferred, it basically shut down to the point of not being able to be run. At the same time, another cruiser shut down, and so they were down two cruisers. And we don't have a robust fleet there. So at some point, it's, I would hazard a guess that it is not going to be one point four million, but it can't be zero if in fact we want to maintain a level service budget. Cars need to run, we need equipment that is reliable, and we need equipment that's safe for the men and women who work here. We need to maintain our buildings.
Notice views there, Kate, okay.
We need to maintain our buildings, or we need to come up with another thing to do with them that may not be ideal, but it, it may be.
Like solve them?
If we don't have the means to care for them and we don't have a municipal.
We're not buying more.
We don't have a municipal purpose. You know, there, there's some decisions that need to be made. I mean, I, the, the.
Yeah, no, I'm just, and again, I'm not, I, I don't, I'm not, it's not intended to be, um, offensive, defensive. I'm just trying to understa- I think, you know, if I'm sitting in the audience, right, I'm seeing some big numbers.
Sure.
Hearing some things.
Yeah.
We went through it with our interim town administrator last year, where there was some pretty big jumps in ass and spends and deferrals as well. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying. And I think it's just, you know, understanding again that our school gobbles up, you know, three quarters of our budget, right? So that leaves us with an eight million, ten million dollar budget to manage. So just trying to separate the costs, the trends, the expenditures. And like we say, you know, I mean, when we say yes to everything, this is what it costs us. So I just.
Yeah, so I just want to be clear, we are literally not saying yes to everything. As a matter of fact, we're, for the most part, saying no to most things. What I will say is if you take one point, um, one point four million dollars and divide it by four years, which is the last time that we actually budgeted for a project, you're coming up with a much smaller number. So this is five fiscal years worth of stuff that if we do not do it, it will either impact service levels or infrastructure. And that's a community decision.
Right. And this gives us a chance to catch up on a lot of, like, deferral of all deferred.
And to your point, the ARPA money is really truly a blessing. So utilizing it in, in how we are, I think it's great. That's not.
Kicks us up a little.
But it is a Band-Aid.
Yes.
But the, but the other thing, so I think, Steve, I think Sue might have been, and not to speak for you, Sue, but your, um, comments made it sound to me, and this was just me. Yeah, your overview was like it was a fait accompli, and I think that you were looking at. The present, the, the discussion, Ash, the way I take this is this was a really good, important step. And it's the first look, um, at the capital request. We also, and now you need to marry that with our operating budget, look at this. So this is a ways away before, it's not.
Well, I would.
I understand your summary, but it's, it's not.
Yeah, I'm sorry if you thought it was a.
I didn't understand what y'all said.
I just said, I said it was a fait accompli, or this was set in stone, so these are.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 no.
We need to look at it more, we will look, we will all look at it more in more detail.
Yeah, and then, and like I said, you guys have the benefit of having the CPA folks come before you and maybe you know how they're gonna spend things and whatever.
They would come before us since I've been chair, huh?
They haven't, they haven't.
Dick told me they were, okay. Well, they're coming to us on the ten. Please join us or listen in. So we can understand, you know, kinda how they're weaving in their expenditures. Cause I think that was important for the, that was what I was asking about the other, and I think Dick too, the historical monster. I don't have any questions. I mean, this is, Kate, you've done a great job. Thank you for putting it in a very organized fashion.
Yeah.
Very detailed.
Yeah, no, no, I do want to say, like, we're not, you just, Alex, I don't want to leave folks with the, the belief that we're now gonna leave here and carry this all the way through to when we did the operating budget in the springtime. We, we have, that's not a luxury that we have. So I just want to make sure we did not leave people with that impression. Yes, Jason?
So I don't have too much to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So.
Case in talks, and we don't get any?
Obviously, I'm, I'm focused on where the money's gonna come from, but I, what I hope residents will take away from this is, is we're not, we're not debating like a hundred or two hundred K or three fifty K or how many rolls of toilet paper we're gonna buy, right? Like, this is two and a half million dollars, right? Is that right? Two point five, right? So how I think about it is, okay, so let's say, let's say you're wrong, Kate, right? Which never happens, right?
It happens all the time.
Let's say you're off by some ridiculous number, like fifty percent, right? We're still behind one three, one point three? That's how far off we are, right? Like, if you made an egregious mistake, we're still off by one point three million dollars. So like, we, we have some challenges in front of us. We as a town have to figure out, you know, what we're going to do, what we're willing to compromise on to, to figure out how to pay, pay, pay past and plan for the future. So that's what I have to say about you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Good.
Awesome.
Do you want me to stop the share?
Yes, please. Michelle, Dick, anything final?
No, nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, anything from you?
I'm done.
Alex?
All set.
Before we all wrap up, um, you'll give us a marching orders on what we need to be thinking about next on this, yes?
Yes, sure.
Before we do that though, uh, Madam Chair, um, we will need to have. We will need to have a, a joint meeting again in January at some point to review the management letter for the audit. So we should figure out through Kate or something, figure out a timing of when, whether we come to your meeting or at some point later in the month of Jan. So I just wanted to make that, make that statement while we were in joint meeting. Anything else?
Who's the tent two early?
Uh, yes, I think so. The tenth, too early?
Yes, I think we would probably be looking at the end of January.
So maybe we could slip it to our February.
Um, but I just think I'd like them to do a full presentation.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we slip it to our February, I think we have like a February seventh meeting or something.
I can, I can wear a second.
The seventh night?
Would that work?
I don't know, but we can ask, so I, I, I was.
Okay, alright, so so, cause you know, we'll leave, right?
And.
And then our speakers will all fill up and then.
Right, that's why I wanted to mention it overall.
Cheryl, is it possible that you can, um, reach out to the auditors and see if they can present their management letter and, uh, just the audit review on the seventh at Finance Committee?
Sure.
Thanks. See? And I just wanted to thank Cheryl for her helping.
Yay, Cheryl.
Never mind about the seventh.
Traveling that week, I mean.
Well, you can be two by zone if we have to.
I don't think so. Maybe I don't need to be present?
Would, would you want me to call in tomorrow and do a date they have available?
Asking, cause you, cause maybe you come to, maybe you come to one of our meetings for.
Good thinking, Cheryl, thank you.
Good, good idea, Cheryl. Alright, so we'll go from there. Anything else you need from us relative to this before we let our finance friends go?
Um, no, I guess I just look for you, so generally speaking, they would, these two documents, meaning the, the operating budget and capital would be sort of together. But since we're not using any operating monies, nor are we looking to borrow, this is not a standalone, cause it informs the other, but, um, I don't anticipate having something back until probably the end of January, and it would be when I have all of the other data points. So if that fits everybody's timetable, and if between now and then, I mean, I didn't, I didn't receive anything like glaring that says absolutely no on this one or whatever. So at some point, if there's something that needs to be changed from this, and I'll send this out, you know, today, we, I probably will just need to know in some way, and whether that's here at an agenda or at a finance committee meeting or something.
Then you get a thumbs up to execute on it.
Well, because what you, because without any feedback, what you're gonna get is exactly what you've seen.
Why don't you send it out, maybe we can put it on the next agenda, and we could talk, cause I have some, uh, I'm sure I'll have questions, so.
Perfect, awesome.
We, we did have a meeting on, so.
We have a meeting, um, January, February seven, January tenth and February seventh.
Alright, finance folk, thank you for joining us.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Dick wants to stay.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you. We have, um, two remaining items in our, um, in our agenda. One is budget, general fund update, recycling center, uh, and then the A, B, C, C, two, twenty twenty-three seasonal population increase estimation form. Ms. Hodges, take them as you wish, which one would you like to start with?
Well, so for the operating budget, I'm only, uh, figure I will offer the latest update if, I'm a little sorry, I'm trying to share my screen. Here we are, okay.
Alright.
So I know folks are likely sick of seeing this same sheet, but as we proceed more, um, let me just, I have to move this thing over here. Alright, so, uh, this is the recommendations. Not much has changed in terms of, um, our revenues, but we are projecting, um, this is total real and personal without excluded debt. This is outside, which would be, um, personal property. So we have twenty-six million, one hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five, of which we have four point four almost in personnel, two point two four in ex- non-personnel expenses. Debt has gone down, risk management has gone up a bit. This is the, um, reserve account, as we were talking about. We're carrying the, uh, schools in these areas. Other school right now is based on actuals. And so we are projecting with the school, oh, sorry, with the school increase at five percent, it's a total town deficit of two forty-one, six fifty-three, and a total deficit of one point one, give or take. With the school at six percent, um, it's a town deficit of almost three hundred and an, uh, total deficit of one point three. And so, you know, we've kind of, Cheryl has nicely broken that out down here.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So this would be. You know, an increase on the assessment only, um, and then Cheryl, do you want to talk about just the percentages? Because I, I know it's technical, but for those in the audience and here that love the technicalities?
Yeah, I broke it out in the box below, cause when you look above, and we, we keep saying the school at six percent, but when you look above, it's showing, I think, less than five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, five, four, six.
Five point nine three. I want people to understand that when I do the increase for the schools, I do it on the assessment only because your debt payment is not part of the assessment and should not be increasing. If anything, your debt payment should go down a little each year. So that is why I broke out the assessments below.
Thank you.
So I wish I had the golden egg to produce a better.
No, you want the goose that lays the golden eggs, just one egg's not gonna do it. We're gonna need the goose that continues laying eggs.
Either way, the magic ticket, how's that?
That's fine, yeah.
But it just, uh, is likely, this will, I think, be the, the number that you see represented in the overall budget book that we're, we're creating, so.
And so that's, um, you guys continue, so folks know, you guys continue to hone as you get realer numbers and put it into the sheets so that, I mean, it's ironically, the town's share keeps, has gone up a little bit. No, but that's alright. But you're so close to basically where we were when we went through this, which is a testament to the work that you and all the other departments and Cheryl have done. Because as you're getting more real data, the numbers are changing sadly. I'd like it to be going down, but it's not.
So Kate, can we, I know this wasn't in, uh, it's a really good document, it's helpful. It wasn't in the meeting materials, but can we post this with our, I know we talked about posting things with our minutes or something, can we?
Well, so I'm, I mean, I, I can, but I, I'm really hopeful that after the, after the Christmas holiday, that you'll have the budget book done. I've literally been working on it. I have.
Yeah, we should wait for the.
Forty-eight pages of it complete. And so, and I did say in my interview to Jay Moody that I was not going to have a two hundred and ninety-page budget book, but it will be at least half of excellent reading.
At least you kept to that.
We have different definitions of the word excellent.
It is riveting stuff.
Uh, so the suggestion is let's not post something, let, let's post it when we have it all. In theory.
Yeah, well, this is our working document, so I just don't want to freak anybody out yet.
Yeah.
But.
Alright, thank you, Kate. Another recycling center, financial update and determinations.
Sure, so, um, Cheryl and I had the opportunity to meet with, uh, um, two citizens who run the recycling center. Very lovely people. Unfortunately, the recycling center for the past couple of years has, um, not brought in the amount of money that it costs to run the center, and so they had been dipping into their reserves. And, um, the reserves are running thin, and we have enough to likely get us to the first of the year. And then we do not have anymore from there. And, uh, unfortunately, I think the only thing to do, eh, just in discussions with them is, is to, um, shut it, shut it down for right now until we have a, a different outlook. The garbage hauling has gotten much more expensive, the fuel surge- charges have gotten much more expensive. And, um, we're charging a minimal, uh, three dollar entrance fee. And my understanding is that the people who are using the recycling center often are complaining that that's too high. So it doesn't seem like we would get, uh, people to pay, you know, even five or six dollars because the fee that's going in there is already so good.
Well, you're likely kicking the can now, not to.
Right.
Better recycling joke, but.
No pun intended, but yeah. So I, it's, it, it is through no fault of any of those wonderful volunteers, um, you know, it just.
Do we think it's, a lot of it's that the private collectors not taking rec- like a lot more than they're taking recycling, and so people aren't, don't have as much to bring to the, the town recycling center?
That was their thought, is that people have the ability to have a separate bin where they can recycle, um.
I'll tell you, it's, it has been a great resource for the town for a very long time.
So people have done a lot. This is, um, as we all allude, as we all said, the volunteers that you met with, and those over the years have been very dedicated. In fact, at one point, they had, um, a large surplus because they had, in different times, recycling cost less and people were donating money. But this is a, um, a policy decision. And as a green community, um, I think it's important that we talk about, even if it costs money, how we're gonna support the recycling, because there are many haulers that don't recycle and many people who do look at it, and a lot of our towns do it. A lot of our neighboring towns have pretty vital centers. So I think that there's a demand for it. I agree with you, I know I've been down there, and I think part of it is just because they haven't either had the staffing or the budget, um, when they've gone on every other week, people get confused. I see people at the gates, the other things, although they've been posting it. But I think it's something, it sounds like we do need to close it temporarily, but I'd like to make sure that it was, if they don't have.
So it's thirteen to fifteen hundred a month. So it's thirteen to fifteen hundred a month, so just figure, I mean, that there could be a, a policy decision to allocate that, um.
Like to reiterate my saying, conservation isn't free, so.
Yes.
It's, um,
And in some cases, it's thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred a month, to be a green community, that's the cost. Um, and we need to figure out a way to pay for that as a town.
We also missed, we didn't get, we were one of, of the twenty-two towns in our region, three of them, only three of them didn't get the recycling grant, cause we didn't apply this year. So there is, um, money available from D E P and other things that we may be able to do, and think of some other innovative ways to do it, but I do think it's important that we discuss about how to keep it in the budget.
So it's, it's not in the budget currently, cause it's operated based on,
Correct, so by keeping, I mean, by keep the service, right?
It's a special revenue, It's a special revenue account, so if, in fact, we wanted it to be funded by the town,
You'd be looking for nine grand for the rest of the fiscal year?
Well, you'd have to, we'd have to go to town meeting and create.
So we can't just give it money?
We're, I don't know where you're gonna get it from, first of all.
If there was some magic,
Photocopying, yeah, exactly. Less photocopying, maybe?
Is this an ARPA?
It's Bitcoin.
Is this ARPA eligible?
Um, yeah, I mean, I suppose it, it, it could be, I would,
It'd be a donation, because it's not a town enterprise, right?
I wouldn't, yeah, it, it's a special revenue account, we need to be careful about, we don't deposit into special revenue accounts. If you wanna take this over as a general fund, we should have a cost center associated with it.
Yes, we'd have to talk about that, yeah.
I guess you're hearing an appetite from the board to look at some options in January for how we can just try and summarize what my colleagues are saying.
Options would be great, yeah.
Let's come up with some options for what to do, but obviously, this is a policy decision that has to include the finance committee for the next fiscal year, as we shift to make this, if that is a desire. We have to make a determination whether us having our own recycling way is the only way in which we contribute to being a green community, or if there is a better alternative in a neighboring community that could give our, our citizens that option, or if paying twenty thousand dollars a year to keep it open is,
Yeah, yeah, when the, when the information gets put together, I would love to see, you know, is it, is it cost that's increasing at a rate that we can't afford, or is it donations and use is down, and that we can't afford? I'm, I'm guessing it's all inflation, it's probably double digits.
In use is,
And use, so I'd be interested to see that, because if the appetite of, of the community is not to use it, and they're using it less and for less so many years, then why would we invest in that?
And that's, that's what I heard, was people are going there less, which is why I asked the question about, are people doing it at home, or?
My understanding is private haulers, but if I could get the data from, the other thing is that, uh, we need to, there needs to be a discussion with, I guess, with public works, because it's, it's unclear to me who this falls under.
It, yeah.
But I'm told that it does not fall under public works, and public works, uh, requested that the superintendent not attend the meeting because,
It does not fall under,
It does not fall under public works, so, um,
It was always all volunteer in the past, we, you know, it just answered to the board of selectmen, technically.
Jason, would you want to be the coordinator for the select board on options for us?
No, I would like to see the data first, which can probably happen after the five thousand page budget book that you're preparing.
No, it's half of two hundred and ninety, so we're gonna hold you to one hundred and forty-five.
I wanna, I wanna see the data first, and then absolutely be happy to play a role in,
But just everyone should understand it closes, the, like, we're, we're, it will be closed for a period of time.
It's, unless,
Once it closes January one, we're not real,
You want us to take money from free cash or something, which I would hesitate doing without a town meeting appropriation, it needs to close in January, um, for some period of time.
Is it even a town entity?
So it is in a town building, but it's not,
That doesn't mean, like,
It's not.
We need to even know, like, it may not even be us that who oversee it, cause we don't appoint anybody to the recycling center, do we?
We do, we do, we used to, we used to report to the recycling, it used to be a committee, but it's one of those, it was Martha Ford for the longest time, other people. They've been kind of on autopilot, very good, many volunteers, just been,
Excellent, motivated people, but, yeah.
Thank you. Alcohol Beverage Control Commission of twenty twenty-three seasonal population increase estimation form.
Which essentially is just that, take the census data and calculate how many permits and special permits a community can have in that, and it was in your packet, I believe.
So I noticed in our packet, the population was eight, it was eight thousand, one hundred and forty-four was our census number, at least I think so, I'm just going by the top of my, I put my packet away, something, is that right? Close to, um, okay. So I know that because of redistricting, we had to peel that number, because I think it took into account,
Eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one.
Ooh, okay, I got the fours in the wrong order.
That's all right.
Um, because it required that we have, um, we rearrange our polling districts, our precincts. So I don't know what came of that, because I think, I thought that we were using a lower number, I don't know if that's to our advantage or not in this case. What does this give us, does this change our number of licenses?
I don't think so, cause it,
We just have to submit this form, right?
Right.
So we just have to approve this form, sign it and submit.
But also, it's nice to have that idea what our population we're counting really is, because that affects lots of things.
And Smiley, do you have a question?
So I wrote that legislation when it got passed, so it was purposely done so it would not support the state laws and numbers. It was very specific to the town Lancaster, I don't know if that matters, but, um, I don't know how that changed.
It, it didn't, it was just the population number.
Yeah, all we're doing is, Yeah, just the population number, yeah.
Yeah, so, our, the different licenses is very different than what the state holds.
So you just need us to approve, sign in this form?
Right, that's the, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve, sign in the form?
Submit.
Second.
All in fa- oh, any further discussion? Hopefully not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's done electronically, so.
Exactly, but we need to vote to say go ahead.
No, 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 I know, I'm just, that's why you don't have a paper.
E three sixty says that we have a revolving fund for cycling operating expenses.
Right, that's what they're using right now.
Which is now gonna be up to,
But because it's special revenue, we can't, we're not gonna allocate general funds to it, so we would have to,
He thought he's like, ah!
Yeah, but it's almost at zero.
Any other questions, comments?
Sounds like you wanna be the chair.
It sounds like he does.
I know, he's,
Who wants to be chair of the recycling committee? I'll find, I'll find somebody.
Uh huh, uh, all right, well, hearing no,
Make sure they come to, with twenty grand to the table.
Hearing no further discussion, is there a motion or adjourn?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.